Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 3, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Angela, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Michelle, can we please have roll call?
John Marshall.
Here.
J.D. Draculich.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Arthur Munoz.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
We have a quorum, and welcome to the Reno City Planning Commission, everyone.
Great, thank you, everyone. Thanks for being here. Next, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment? For this item?
We received emails for this item, but they're all related to future agenda items. They were forwarded to the Planning Commission, and they have been entered as part of the record. I have not received any public comment cards for this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to item number four, approval of the minutes, 4.1 for the Reno City Planning Commission, April 21st, meeting 2021.
Madam Chair, move to approve. Mr. Gower?
Mr. Johnson, I'll second.
We have the motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Further discussion?
I just have to abstain. I was absent from that one. Did you do both or just one?
I just did one.
Okay, the first one, all right.
Okay, so, all those opposed? Looks like motion passes this one with Commissioner Marshall abstaining. Okay, item 4.2, Planning Commission meetings from, meeting minutes from May 5.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gower, move to approve.
Mr. Johnson, I'll second.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Fantastic, moving on to item number five, public hearings. This is for possible action recommendation to City Council. Case number LDC 21-00067, Master Plan Text Amendment, zoning districts. And I believe we have a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Commission. It's nice to meet you all in person. I'm Kelly Mullen, Principal Planner with City of Reno. And here this evening to discuss a master plan text amendment related to zoning districts and updating those within all of the City of Reno master plan categories. And before we get into the details, I would just like to start with a little bit of context on how we got to today. Back in January, the new zoning code was adopted, and the majority of zoning districts were consolidated into fewer categories and renamed. And then back in April, you heard an update on the upcoming citywide neighborhood engagement program, and that's the next phase of work following the zoning code adoption. That's going to be aimed at, one, reducing the existing nonconformities between master plan and zoning districts, and, two, diversifying land uses at the neighborhood scale. Council also reviewed that program, and in doing so, they provided some direction to staff to allow for lower intensity zoning in certain master plan categories. So that brings us to today's request, which is essentially that first step in the next phase of work following the zoning code adoption in January. It's also, of course, a critical step in launching the neighborhood engagement program this summer. So what's changing? At a high level, there are four key components of this master plan amendment. First, of course, is updating those zoning district names and also the application types, the nomenclature related to that in the master plan so that it does match the newly adopted zoning code. Also, we are looking to expand specific master plan categories to allow for less intense residential and employment zoning in some of those categories. Also, for new requests for industrial zoning, those would be limited to properties with an industrial master plan. And then a final item is just to allow for typos to be corrected administratively in the master plan. So getting into some of the details. Chapter 1 is where you'll see that new provision allowing for non-substantive typos and grammatical errors to be corrected in-house rather than through the public hearing process. Chapter 3 is where you will see updates to references to special use permit, which is an outdated application type. And Chapter 4 is where the meat of the changes are going to be occurring. And all of the zoning districts, as mentioned before, will be updated to match that new zoning code. There's also going to be some formalizing of existing master plan narrative by adding parks, greenways, and open space, and public facilities to be conforming zoning districts in all of the master plan categories. And also, as a sort of cleanup item, we would be clarifying that specific plan district zoning, similar to PUD or planned unit development zoning, is something that would be a conforming district as well in all categories, as long as the underlying land uses conform with the master plan category. Currently, our master plan categories are relatively discreet in that they allow for no overlap of zoning districts between the different categories. And so this is something that offers very little flexibility, and that's part of the reason that council expressed its desire for widening the range of zoning districts within each category. So following that direction, what is proposed before you today is lower intensity residential zoning districts being added to our single-family, multifamily, mixed neighborhood categories, as well as to the suburban mixed-use category, and adding mixed employment to the industrial category. And on the flip side, the zoning districts in the mixed employment category would be narrowed to more accurately reflect the uses and characteristics that are described in the adopted master plan. Right now, industrial and industrial-commercial are allowable zoning districts in the mixed employment category. This is something that would change. Existing industrial and industrial-commercial properties would be considered conforming, but new requests for industrial or industrial-commercial would be limited to the industrial master plan category. Now, Appendix D of the master plan is our neighborhood plan supplement that lists all of the land use categories and conforming zoning districts for each neighborhood plan area. Similar to what you saw in Chapter 4, we would be updating all of the zoning district names. One additional change would be within the Mortenson-Garson Overlay District, or MGOD, where some additional changes would be made. Mixed-use suburban would be added as a conforming zoning district to the suburban mixed-use category, and that would allow for some enhanced design standards, a reduced height limit when compared to the existing MGOD zoning districts. And adding mixed-use suburban would also create, of course, an alternative to the general commercial and neighborhood commercial zoning districts that are allowed in that category and also complement the upcoming MGOD text amendment that is scheduled for later this year, and it would also facilitate the next agenda item this evening. One other change in the MGOD is adding single-family residential, three units per acre, in the single-family neighborhood category. That's something of a cleanup item. It is an existing district already, both on the ground and in the zoning code. Appendix F is just a list of changes that have been made to the master plan since it was adopted. So this evening's amendment would also be reflected there. And then a taste of what's ahead. In July, end of July, we are aiming for council to review this amendment. That would, and assuming that they approve, give the go-ahead to approve that and move forward, in the summer, we would then kick off that neighborhood engagement program. And again, that's expected to be a multi-year process. Then in late 2021, we do expect to bring back some changes to Chapter 5, our implementation plan, to talk about some of the significant progress that has been made in implementing the master plan since it was initially adopted. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and a possible motion is on the screen for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Want to do disclosures?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Michelle, keep me in line. Let's start with disclosures. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No disclosures.
Mr. Velto?
Thank you, no disclosures.
Mr. Munoz?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall?
I visited the site. No, wait. Yeah, I am. No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, great, we'll close public comment. Sorry, I was just gonna skip to the next one. Commissioners, do we have questions, comments? Commissioner Gower, you want to start us off? Commissioner Johnson?
We're just at the opposite ends of the table now.
It's easier to look this way.
I know, yeah. Thank you. Kelly, question, I guess, in general, in looking at this, I understand a lot of the changes that are here are kind of cleaning up some of the, just the definition and the naming. But as you pointed out, there was a few where we're adding zoning districts, whether it's the single-family or, I think, in keeping with something that came before us a month or so ago, there's some additional multifamily in the suburban mixed-use and a couple of other changes that way. Has staff looked at this to see if this is having any impact? I know, looking forward, there was a lot of cleanup with respect to non-conforming sites. Has there been an analysis in terms of how these changes may be impacting some of the existing non-conforming uses?
There has. So overall, we're looking at about 6,000 parcels that are currently considered to be non-conforming between the zoning district and the master plan category. And the changes that are proposed this evening would drop that number down by another 800, 850 or so. That's what we're expecting.
Okay, so, kind of a minimal impact, but some nonetheless.
Correct.
And then I guess, has there been maybe any concern, considering a lot of the questions that we've been looking at with respect to density? Seems like a number of the changes are actually reducing allowable density. So has there been maybe an analysis within maybe those 800 units or 800 parcels or however many there are in terms of, you know, potential for changes in allowable density? What there's, I know it's kind of a math question, but...
So, and I think I'll answer it this way, in terms of what this change is going to do, it's, you know, enabling, or these changes are enabling in the sense that they will allow for a wider range of zoning districts within those master plan categories, right? So in terms of how that may impact density or density averages across the city, that will certainly be dependent upon what types of applications that are received. You know, and any application for zoning district change, of course, would go through the normal review process, but don't necessarily have additional, you know, math that I could provide for you at this time.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I think, by and large, I'm in favor of the changes that are made. I think it gives a little more flexibility, but I think it'll be incumbent to look at some of these to make sure that we're maintaining some of the density figures and infill standards that we were looking at. So just be, I guess, interesting moving forward to see how this is implemented.
And I guess I should add on to that, too. You know, the next step of the process with that neighborhood engagement program, where we are going to be going out to all of the different neighborhoods in the city, and really, the intent, or part of the intent, is, you know, not just fixing those nonconformities, but a really large part of that is also looking at diversifying land uses at that neighborhood scale. So where we will be getting input from the public in terms of where they think that it might be appropriate to result in additional intensification or de-intensification in certain areas, and that's something that, you know, as a result of that input, we fully expect to be bringing back changes to this commission and to the council as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Madam Chair, no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
I don't have any questions.
All that, nothing? Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. Kelly, maybe, maybe it's just because I'm used to different wording, but, you know, I am also interested in this issue of decreasing in density and, you know, allowing less dense residential in, you know, in not an insignificant number of, or in areas. You've used, in terms of consistency with, you know, the council's direction for the master plan, about master-planned communities. Are you, are you just saying that, is that, are you using that as a term of art, so like a PUD or some smaller unit, or are you just saying for these master plan categories?
So these specific master plan categories, and I apologize if I had referenced master-planned communities instead of categories, I apologize for that, but certainly what we're talking about here and all those categories that are listed there, those are master plan categories, sometimes referred to as master plan land use or designation, so...
Yes, okay, great, I understand now. So let me just get out a few things. I noticed that your, you know, the staff report said, you know, you're updating special use permits to replace with, you know, because we've replaced special use permits with conditional use permits, but the change in the master plan is a deletion of just special and not conditional, so now it just says, you know, use permits.
Correct.
Was that specific for a reason?
It was specific and purposeful in that, you know, there are some prior existing special use permits that are out there. There may be conditional use permits that come through in the future, and so that gives us a little bit more flexibility where that terminology is applicable to both.
So you're not worried about it applying to different categories of permits? You know, use permits, because now it just, it's pretty generic?
And I would refer back to, you know, the zoning code is very clear in terms of what types of uses require certain types of permits, whether it's a conditional use permit, minor conditional use permit, et cetera. So certainly, if anyone were to submit an application for a use permit, we would expect it to be whatever the zoning code requires.
Okay. Then, and I'll just give you a couple examples, pages 169 of the master plan, 171, 173. This is the deletion of that one or two sentences, I think it's maybe only one sentence, and it's done in a number of places, that you're, you know, the following uses are implied, you know, and then there's a list of them, and I think what you tried to do, and I think you had a slide on it, was to, yeah, to update that with these different kinds of uses. And I just noticed that there were uses specified that were not, I didn't, at least I didn't go back and try to figure out, whether that actually was a broader array of uses than the result of adding a specific PGOS or public facilities in the specific, you know, list of allowed uses or, you know, consistent uses. Was that on purpose, or, so there's like, some had schools or other types of uses that now I don't think would be consistent, but once were, or did I misread all that?
So the intent of kind of eliminating some of the language in the category description was because we were replacing that, so to speak, with the addition of the categories for the PGOS, the public facilities, and most of those uses, as it indicated in the, you know, in the category description, uses such as parks, recreation facilities, community gardens, other small agricultural schools, institutions, et cetera, public quasi-public uses, generally, those would be covered in allowable uses in most of those zoning districts. So it's kind of getting at the same thing, and that's that, you know, the part where I was talking about formalizing some of the master plan narrative, it's intended to get at that. And again, at the same time, you know, we would always go back to the zoning code and what is allowed, which uses are specifically allowed in each zoning district.
The only, I would push back just a little bit, because of the way that that language is written, it said certain uses implied, such as, so I think it reduces a little bit of flexibility, and I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but it reduces a little bit of flexibility, you know, for saying whether or not is, if a particular use is within that category, as, you know, I don't know whether it's an accessory use or something else that, but if you're kind of comfortable with the range of uses being encompassed by the specific use categories, then I guess that's just an observational passout to the fellow commissioners.
And certainly, I think that we do have that level of comfort, but, you know, if that is a piece in terms of deleting some of that language, where the commission would feel more comfortable with leaving it in as opposed to deleting it, certainly that's something that we can take forward to council as well when it goes to them.
The only thing you might want to just look at is, and you probably did this, but just to see what uses are no longer consistent, that wouldn't be allowed by, you know, in those listing, and if those are important to decision-makers, that they know that, you know, so either you can say, oh, those are all allowed, or these ones are not.
True.
No longer going to be consistent, and so when we switch to the specific designation. The one thing, then, that I noticed that the specific plan district was added in, and that's, I think, a little different than getting rid of that one, you know, sentence. It's a different kind of use category?
And that, and that is under, I would say, a different category or different reasoning, so to speak. Specific plan districts are, it is a zoning district that we allow for, and we want to make sure that that is reflected. It is allowed in all master plan categories similar to planned unit development, so it's intended to reflect that, and we were considering that kind of more of a cleanup item of making sure that that is reflected in the master plan as well.
So because it's kind of generic, it doesn't, okay, now I understand what, the way you framed it as SPD aligning with master planning categories, it doesn't really align with them, it's just all land use categories are allowed in an SPD? Is that another way of saying that?
Certainly, all, the SPD district would be allowed in, or is considered conforming in all master plan categories, again, assuming that the land use conforms to that master plan category, the underlying land use.
And I'm, I'm not a, I don't deal with special planning districts very much, and I always get them confused with spas, and Arlo hates me for that, but I don't understand how it's, if it doesn't contain a land use, how is it, how do you make that consistency determination? Is it, is it the land use that is being proposed for the special use district? I mean, I get that right? Special plan district that is then consistent with the master planning designation? Or is it the zoning that would control within an SPD? I'm sorry to ask a kind of basic question.
No, that's fine, and I think what might be helpful is to kind of go back in terms of what the purpose of a specific plan district is, and I'll ask Planning Manager Fuess, or excuse me, Assistant Director Fuess, if she might want to correct me or add to any of this. But specific plan districts generally are going to be taking your base zoning district and modifying it in some way, provide some additional benefit in order to allow for some sort of variation in the standards associated with that district. Is there something else that should be added?
That is exactly correct. The specific plan district is very similar to what we call planned unit developments or PUDs. For a while, we took specific plan districts out of our code, and so we have a number that are historically there. They were adopted just like a PUD, and then we stopped approving specific planning districts. Those have now been an allowed zoning category that's been added back into our zoning code, and so they're kind of historically something that we had and something that we're going to start seeing again in the future, but they basically kind of create a separate set of zoning regulations, and so they would fit within all the different master plan categories because they are, they're not one specific density or one specific set of uses, they really are just a broad range of different densities and allowed uses that's catered to their own zoning category, if that makes sense. And similar to a PUD, think of the Somerset Planned Unit Development, where it allows for a mix of different zoning categories and densities, kind of sub-zoning categories, and so they are, a PUD is a zoning designation that's allowed in all of our different master plan designations.
And so the consistency runs upwards to the master plan designations for the PUD? I mean, excuse me, for the SPD?
So say that again?
Or does the special planning district, I'm sorry, I'll shut up in just a second, but, does a special planning district contain both master plan designations, the equivalent of master plan designations, and specific uses?
A special planning district is specific to zoning.
Okay.
It's not a master plan category.
So, and we're... And, but it, okay, I think I got it barely.
Think of it as this is very similar to a PUD. PUD is zoning, and we allow, all PUDs fit within all our different master plan categories because they contain really just a varied mix of different, I'm gonna call them subzonings.
Okay.
SPDs or specific plan districts are similar to PUDs in that, in that way.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm a little rough ground with that, but the last question is on, is, you know, the effort of what you've gone through, and is it, was it more ministerial or was it an exercise of staff discretion as to what categories of zoning should be moved over into, you know, updated through this effort? And in particular, you know, I'm looking at Chapter 18.02 in the chart that, I think is Attachment B, and in the conversion, zoning district conversion, was that just taken straight across? And those are the new uses on the left side, or was there some, some exercise of planning discretion as to what should go where?
So the conversion in terms of the renaming of the districts in the master plan to match the new zoning code, that was a straight conversion out of that, that table that you referenced in 1802, 109. Now, the additions to the categories in terms of the, you know, parks, greenways, and open space, public facilities, SPD, the additions that you see on this slide, certainly that was, you know, those changes were based on other reasonings, that was not a renaming, but all of the renaming's that you see in this, in this document, that was a straight conversion.
Commissioners, other questions? I have one quick question, Kelly. You mentioned the text amendment, and I don't know if it's more important, it's probably more appropriate for the next item to ask about the status of that, Angela?
The Mortenson-Garson Overlay District text amendment began January of 2020, a long time ago. It is coming back, and that will be scheduled for Planning Commission probably in July. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Comments? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Munoz?
Sorry, I couldn't get my red light on. Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz for the record. I'm just wondering, Kelly, why the change in density, the lower counts, it just seems counterproductive from what we've been trying to do, not that I see anything wrong with it, but it seems like we've been going the opposite way for the last year, so why, why that change?
Certainly, you know, one of the, one of the reasons behind that is because those categories are, or the master plan categories are so discreet in terms of not allowing overlap between the zoning districts. We were seeing some, some issues crop up with that, and I think that is what led to council providing that direction specifically to allow for lower intensity zoning in some of the categories, you know, and that was very specific direction from them. And in terms of the, you know, the variety of what has been added in, we tried to make sure that it was making sense both with how each of those categories are described in the adopted master plan, which is also part of the, you'll notice that a lot of them just naturally fit into the range of densities that's already described for a lot of those categories.
Thank you, nothing further, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, other discussion? Mr. Marshall?
I just wanted to kind of sum up my concerns. This, I think, is a fairly significant change, and I don't feel like this has been vetted. vetted to the degree that it should. Because it involved a lot of staff discretion work on assigning uses within areas, and because we're just coming out of, you know, our COVID, and here we are at our first time together, that there was no, you know, there was, as I understand it, there wasn't any, you know, efforts to run this through our, I'm forgetting the name of the working group. Well, the NABS for one, but then, then there was a regional plan and code, their code group, or a...
As part of the zoning code update, we did have a stakeholder group.
Yeah. And so it can get at Commissioner Munoz's concern, which I share, which, and I think it's kind of articulated by Commissioner Johnson of what is the net effect here, you know, through all our planning districts and the net effect on housing? If there is, you know, I could, on the one hand, see where we've come across some instances where we kind of felt like an in-between density was appropriate, but we were, you know, stuck with a MF30 or something. And so, you know, I just feel like I'm not really in a, in a great place to exercise my discretion whether to move forward with this because of the potential consequences and, you know, not having a lot of input from, you know, people who might be looking at this a little slightly different way. And so, you know, I have some, I have some significant concerns with that. So while I think in general, probably most of this stuff can move forward, I am concerned about the adding of the uses. I think the other, you know, the other more ministerial things, like deleting the language on, on special use, I'm sorry, special use permits and that kind of stuff, I could support, but I think for the core of the additional uses, I have reservations at this point to, to move that forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Other comments? Commissioner Veltel?
Is, is there an option to sever that portion out of the motion? Or is there a timeline that we're working with that, that would complicate something?
I think as, whatever the vote is today, this will be forwarded to City Council, and I think if one of your comments is that before City Council votes, you feel it should go to a more robust stakeholder input process, we can forward that information to them, and then they can make the decision if, if they want to move forward with these changes, or if, if they agree that we should slow it down and, and take it back through a stakeholder process.
So Angela, what would be your recommendation? Do you think it needs to go through a stakeholder process, and why or why not?
Again, I think a lot of these things are items that are cleanup as part of the zoning code update, and these other items that we're hearing are policy direction from our City Council. So they specifically said, we would like to see lower intensity in some of these master plan categories. And so this is a reflection of council's desire, and again, they may change their mind before it gets to council hearing. Again, your guys' input, I think, is, is vital. So I think whatever, however you vote tonight, my, my maybe direction for you guys is to put it on the record so that we can forward that, those comments to Plan, to City Council, why you agree or disagree with some of these changes.
So Commissioner Marshall, could the added comments address your concerns?
You know, I'm just looking at the list of changes by chapter, and I don't know if it's something we, so I think that would be the way of framing a motion that if, I don't think I could support a motion moving all of this forward. I could support a motion that moves specific chapters forward, and then, you know, I, I, you know, with all due respect to Angela, I do think there is a certain amount of discretion that not only is exercised in that section, but it also would be really good to develop more information so that the council has a basis upon which to really see the impacts of what they're doing. And, you know, the exercise of staff discretion will result in this, you know, only through Commissioner Johnson's questioning that, well, it's about 800 parcels that might be changed, but, you know, some others might have a different view of that, and whether, what, you know, how many units, we don't know how many units it might affect if there's lower zoning, but you could run some numbers on, on max, on either maximum or minimums and get a feel for a range. Anyway, so, Madam Chair, what I would suggest, we could go through that, or, you know, I can just place my concerns on record and, and vote as I, and vote as I will.
Mr. Marshall, can you explain a little bit what, what you would like to see going forward that may address your concerns or allow you to be in a better position to assess whether staff has taken too much discretion?
I don't necessarily think they're taking too much discretion, and that's Commissioner Marshall, by the way, for, you know, just a little bit of time. But I, I think what I would like to make certain is that the impact of what we're doing is better known and better vetted, and through a number of different stakeholders that might have a little different interest, so housing advocates or, you know, other, other perspectives that are, you know, that I think were useful in developing the code in, in the first instance. That's why you kind of do those types of processes. So that's, you know, I think it's, you know, might garner more community support, it might flesh out issues that, you know, we didn't otherwise think about, you know, I think, you know, to some extent, this just kind of came at us this first time, which I, and I don't view this as a, as a, in, most of this is insignificant. This chunk, I think it's chap, basically Chapter Four, it really is the, the, the meat of it, and I'd appreciate, you know, a little more work done on that, I suppose.
Commissioners, just for, excuse me, discussion, I, I don't think I would be in support of pulling apart chapters of this. I would be in support of a motion with comments of concern.
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If Commissioner Marshall were to articulate his comments into a motion, I hear what you're saying, and I would be willing to support a motion that includes some of the recommendations that you've stated on the record.
Sounds like we're looking for a motion.
Well, Commissioner Gower, I can make a motion, but I'm going to drop Chapter Four and explain why, so I don't, I don't know if that's what you were, if you were getting at. I think what may be better if there, if my perspective is not, you know, shared by many, that someone make a motion to adopt the whole, move the whole thing, and then I can state my objections to four and say why and vote against it. Because you know how I like to vote against things.
I'm trying to push you out of your box here, Mr. Marshall. So you don't think there's an opportunity to, to make a recommendation including some of the comments that you're talking about with a more informed public process that would maybe come at this?
How about, how about I make a motion, then if it fails, it fails, and if it doesn't, we can make another motion?
All right, let's see.
Madam Chair, in the matter, LDC 21-00067, Master Plan Text Amendment, Zoning Districts, I get the language right. I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan. By resolution, recommend City Council approve, City Council approve the amendment, subject of performance review by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for Chapters One, Three, Appendix D, Appendix F, future amendments. I'm sorry, that's not part of the motion, just ending it, Appendix F, and then recommend that they move Chapter Four forward after pursuing a robust stakeholder process. Well, I'm sorry, no. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gower, I don't, I want to see that information, so I don't want to move it out of here until I see that information.
So why don't you include in your recommendation that that process would be forwarded to the Planning Commission or provide some sort of a forum for defining what that looks like?
And after a, and bring, and, all right, I'll add to my motion for Chapter Four, to conduct a robust stakeholder process, and then to bring back, be brought back to the Planning Commission for recommendation to the City Council.
Madam Chair, can I ask for a clarification on the motion? Commissioner Marshall, are you, so I just want to make sure that you're asking for the stakeholder engagement process that you're looking for to occur, and then it comes back to us as opposed to something coming to us to help define what that looks like before it goes out? Or are we just leaving that robust stakeholder engagement process that you're talking about to, to staff?
Yes.
Okay.
They know how to do that.
I, I don't disagree with that, I just, okay.
Hold on, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Munoz, I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Veltel?
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to know if there's a practical, if there's something that would, what is the reason, I, I understand that it might be better for us to have a more robust stakeholder process, or it definitely is better to have that discussion and have more information, but is there a cost to that? Is there something that's going to happen as a result of us delaying this process?
And Kelly, is there any timeline that you're under? Does this need to be to regional by a certain timeframe?
We want to make sure that it does go back to council by the time that they return from their summer break in July, so that means wrapping things up to get it to them in time would need to be completed by the end of this month.
So yes, there is a timeframe that we are up against, and I think, I think one way we can do this, we can reengage our stakeholder group that was involved in the zoning code update, that's something we can do as staff and, and get input from them, and take that input, and include it in the staff report that goes to City Council. And so City Council will still be hearing this on the July 21st council meeting.
Angela, isn't City Council going to still hear this anyway regardless of what we do? I mean, we can, we can, this is our recommendation to them, it goes to them unless you guys decide that, yeah, maybe we should slow it down and have a robust stakeholder engagement.
And, and the timeframe that we're up against is that we basically have six weeks to get whatever needs to happen done before it goes to council.
I mean, is, but that deadline is generated because you want to get it done before they go on their break.
Kelly, what's the reason that we have to get it to council and then to regional?
So the, the timing, and just to clarify, that would be bringing it back to them right after their break. Now, if it were to go, if we were to get pushed back longer, certainly the, I suppose the impact that that may have would be to potentially delay the launch of the neighborhood engagement program, since this is a key first part of that. But in terms of, you know, deadlines of getting things to, to regional, that'll just, it'll follow after council action.
So we, we could extend this if, if we can't get enough comment, but just, just to be clear, too, on what we're talking about with Chapter Four, so the majority of these changes adds more zoning categories. It, it doesn't take away categories. So the maximum densities are still the same maximum densities, we're just adding the option to add different zoning categories if you want to do lower zoning designations. In other words, lower densities. So the, the maximum's still the same, it doesn't limit your ability to still do the same number of units that you could do today, you're still capped at that. But what it does provide is more flexibility so that when we have projects where maybe Planning Commission or City Council feels that maybe that density is, is that's being requested is too much, and a lower density is more appropriate, without having to change the master plan, this gives the flexibility to look at other zoning categories. So that's what this does. Again, it's, it's providing more flexibility by allowing for zoning categories with reduced density. If you want to do the, you know, again, we can do the math and say, what's the minimum density that they could do? A person put one house on a property zoned MF30, right? There's no limit. We don't have a, 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 a limit on, just because you're zoned a certain density, you don't have to maximize that. You could always do far less if you choose to with your property. So again, this, this gives more flexibility, the, the policy direction very specifically came from City Council. So that was not something that staff said, let's use our discretion on. That was the direction we were given, and now is coming before you for your input.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we had some discussion, can we take a vote?
It's City Council's directive, then when they see it, if it's not consistent with their directive, they would probably change it, or, but I, I do appreciate your concern. Is the effect of your motion now to stall this from going to City Council with that deadline?
Angela can answer that, but I don't think it stalls anything. If the City Council agrees with it, it, I wouldn't say stall, I would say, you know, better inform the public and decision makers as to what the, what is happening. But that might take some additional time, but that's up to the city to decide. It goes, as I understand it, Angela, it goes from us to the City Council regardless of what our recommendation is.
It does.
Michelle, can you call for the vote, please? Kathleen Taylor?
No.
Hang on just a second, okay. John Marshall?
Yes.
Katie Dracula?
No.
Peter Gower?
No.
Mark Johnson?
No.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Alex Veltel?
Yes.
So motion fails five to two, is that accurate?
No.
Three, sorry.
Four to three.
Four, three.
We need five for a master plan or resolution to pass.
Okay, so we are back to square one with entertaining another motion. Again, this is a recommendation to City Council.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dracula, just for discussion for record, I agree with a lot of things that's been said, and I appreciate your take on that, and you bring up a lot of good points. It seems like I want to follow the city's direction, but also, you know, relaying our concerns that were spoken here today would satisfy me moving forward.
Kelly, would you mind putting the motion back up on the screen, please? Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just make a comment? Since I kind of started this whole thing with questions down this road, I think, I certainly appreciate where the discussion has gone, but I think when I'm looking at this, what's, what's not changing in this, and I think this is the, the key component for me, is what's not changing is all of the, the, the reviews and the oversights and the things that we were looking at as a part of, you know, compatibility, adjacency standards, looking at, at what's going on from a review process, from a, and from an entitlement process. I think Angela makes a, a good point that, you know, there's a maximum density, and all this is doing is, is allowing for classifications at a lower density that don't change either the... the land use, they don't change the regulatory requirements, they just allow us, and I keep going back to the example from a couple of meetings ago where there was a project on Lakeside where the only multifamily zoning was MF30, which was denser than they could even get on there, but that was what they had to do, and it created a situation that was uncomfortable certainly for me because of what it would allow, but I think that was the impetus for looking at ways to allow without adding, you know, a master plan change step to it. So when I look at this, this doesn't change the things that are of major concern to me with respect to the projects that come through here. This is just purely a ability to take a piece of land and say, it doesn't have to be quite this dense. Now, that's an entirely different conversation in terms of what the priorities are for the master plan, and I think that's really what I hear is kind of the issue, is that, you know, we've had a lot of discussions at this body and at council about density and about infill, and it's a very valid concern to say, does this impact that? But that to me is a policy question and something that's on a site-by-site basis, it's not impacted, and it would be something that we would be looking at on every one of those projects regardless. So when I look at this, and that was kind of my question, it's like, I want this to be cleaned up so that we're seeing more appropriate uses coming before us that aren't multiple things that we have to be looking at. This is in conformance with the master plan, let's focus on, is it appropriate from a density standpoint, from a residential adjacency standpoint, from a use standpoint? So I appreciate the concerns, but to me, those concerns are about priorities of density, not so much the land use that we're looking at here. So I appreciate the concerns, and I think those concerns are going to be well articulated moving forward, but I think this is essentially, in my mind, a cleanup and a simplification for projects that maybe don't fit the level of density that the current master plan forces upon. So that's the way I'm looking at this. Based on that, I'm prepared to make the motion if there's no additional discussion. Okay, based upon compliance with the recommended evaluation criteria, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend City Council approve the amendment, subject to conformance review by the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and with that, and I'm trying to figure out where it fits into there, but recommend the City Council approve the amendment based on the conversations that have occurred at Planning Commission tonight as part of our recommendations and subject to conformance review. So that would be, that would be my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, do we have a second?
Commissioner Draculich, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Commissioner Marshall, I'll be voting no only because of Chapter 4, but I would vote yes on the remaining chapters.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
No.
J.D. Draculich?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Commissioner Munoz, yes, but I do like the fact that Commissioner Johnson put in the statement about what was said here today, and hope that's reviewed by City Council.
Alex Veltou?
It's like the new Real World mute button, oh, no.
So the motion passes five to two.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item 5.2, this is for possible action recommendation to City Council, case number LDC 21-00031, Logistics Center I-80 West Phase 2 Zoning Map Amendment. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Ken, can you hang on for just one second, please? Okay, Ken, go ahead.
And am I controlling the presentation?
Yes, you have control.
Is it just the right arrow?
I believe so.
Okay.
Try it and see if it works.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Ken Crater, and I am representing the applicant on this project, Dermody Properties, and also with me tonight is Craig Wilcutt, the Vice Chairman of United Construction. This project, the case before you right now is strictly for a zone change, and then there'll be a subsequent case for a condition of use permit and alternative equivalent compliance. So for the zone change, the existing land use of this parcel, which is located in the Boomtown area, it's immediately next to and west of Cabela's, and then east of and adjacent to the new Meridian 120 North Single Family Residential Development. It's south of and across the street from the first phase of the Dermody Industrial Park in the Boomtown area, and it borders and is north of Interstate 80. This site is part of the Morton-Garson Overlay District, and right now, there's two parcels, and there's three different zoning categories on this, on these two properties. The majority of the land has a zoning designation of hotel-casino, just under 23 acres, about three acres of arterial commercial, and just under one acre of single-family residential six zoning. We are not affecting the SFR six, that will remain as is and essentially will become landscaped common area open space. So the proposed zoning is to change the hotel-casino and arterial commercial to mixed-use suburban, which per just the previous action will hopefully become allowed use within the land use designation of suburban-mixed-use. We have done substantial community outreach on this process. We started out with a meeting with the Ward 5 councilperson to really get our arms around what she saw as the community issues in this area. Obviously, she's very familiar with the Verde area and the stakeholder groups and what has come up in that neighborhood in the many, many years. We then had a general stakeholders' meeting, we had an adjoining neighborhood meeting, we ended up actually having three meetings with the adjoining neighbors, and I want to clarify, that is the neighbors that live immediately to the west. We did not meet with the folks that live on Scott's Court, which is a model home complex, because when we started this project, that was still being used as a model home complex, but I believe a good majority of those units have now been sold and are either being rented or will be occupied shortly. One of the things that we did too, that I'm proud of, is we reached out to the RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, and Nevada Department of Transportation, because we heard loud and clear from the neighbors out there, they feel like there's a lot of growth ongoing in the Verde area, but they're not getting attention as far as services. And so we reached out to those two transportation agencies and found out that the RTC has been directed to start a Verde transportation study, and so we were able to arrange sort of a stakeholder first meeting with the RTC, with NDOT, with a lot of stakeholders in this area, and really had a good conversation on what people see as the main issues in that area, things that need to be done, safety issues, capacity improvements. We followed up with a general neighborhood meeting where we noticed everybody within 750 feet, as well as a very large stakeholder group within the overall Verde area, and then have had substantial follow-up with adjoining neighbors and stakeholders. And I want to point out that I know you have some emails tonight, and I want you to know that I responded to every single email and did my absolute best to address their comments and concerns. And some of the key issues again, traffic, big issue, lighting, it's a rural area, water, school impacts, which does not create impacts, pedestrian and off-road vehicle access, infiltration to sustain the groundwater, trucks parked on I-80, deer herds, lack of services, and bridge replacement for the bridge over Interstate 80. You can see again the subject site between Cabela's and the single-family residential development under construction, and you can also see the four buildings of the first phase to the north, I-80 to the south. This is a little different point of view. Again, you can see the current land use category mainly suburban-mixed, it is almost all suburban-mixed-use except for that just under one acre of single-family residential, which again, will stay. The current zoning for the site, again, primarily hotel-casino with about three acres of arterial commercial, the single-family zoning, and then again, we're proposing to change the hotel-casino and the arterial commercial to mixed-suburban, but leave the single-family residential as a buffer to the residential neighborhood. Conformance with the master plan and findings, the mixed-use suburban, the proposed MS zoning designation is in conformance with the standard suburban-mixed-use master plan land use designation. And adoption, the previous text amendment will update the Morton-Garson Neighborhood Plan to allow MS and the suburban-mixed-use land use designation. As far as findings, it is consistent with several findings in the master plan, including Goal 2.2, encourage infill and redevelopment, Policy 2.2B, underutilized properties, and the land use plan for suburban-mixed-use as far as the characteristics. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan, it's good to see you. Person.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Good evening, for the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. It's good to be back, understatement that it's been a long year. Ken covered the basis of the request. Again, this is a request not for a project, this is a request for a zoning map amendment on the site. The zoning map amendment would affect 25.93 acres, it's currently zoned hotel-casino on 22.77 acres, and 3.16 acres are zoned arterial commercial. Ken pointed out that there is a sliver of SF6 to the west, and that is not part of the request of the zoning map amendment. The proposed zoning designation is mixed-use suburban, and the site is within Planning Area 2 of the Morton-Son-Garson Overlay District and within the suburban-mixed-use land use designation. This map illustrates existing master plan land use designations on, you can see that the subject site is zoned, or excuse me, master planned suburban-mixed-use, is a substantial area to the north, master plan for mixed employment, and areas to the west are single-family This is a zoning comparison map, just illustrating the site with current zoning and the proposed mixed-use suburban designation. So some key points, the existing hotel-casino zone is non-conforming outside of the Morton-Son-Garson Overlay District, it's actually a legacy. As part of the zoning code update, the Morton-Son-Garson overlay district didn't translate to the new nomenclature for standard zoning, so it kept the AC/SF6 types of zoning with the expectation that we would be coming back with a text amendment, and that's largely because any amendments to base zoning in the Morton-Son-Garson requires a text amendment. One thing to note with the hotel-casino district is that the new code does identify that as a gaming overlay, so when we do bring back recommendations for the Morton-Son-Garson Overlay, the mixed-use suburban base designation would be what's recommended for those areas that are zoned hotel-casino, as that's the only conforming zone for non-restricted gaming in this area. The AC and MS zones both facilitate suburban auto-oriented commercial services and residential uses. The residential capacity of the Morton-Son-Garson Planning Area 2 has already been reached with tentative approvals, so regardless of the zoning designation here, residential applications on the site would not be allowed. The MS zone is distinct from the AC in that it does have enhanced design and compatibility standards under the new code, and future non-residential development on this site are going to trigger discretionary adjacency reviews regardless of the zoning district, be it the current AC/HC or the proposed mixed-use suburban designations. With that, staff can make the findings for the request of the mixed-use suburban designation and suggest a recommendation of approval to the City Council. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, let me see if I can get this right. Let's bring it back to the Commission for Disclosures, let's start on this side, Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Draculich?
I'm familiar with the site and read emails.
Commissioner Marshall?
Same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
Commissioner Veltou?
Same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Okay, Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I received two emails for this item and a voicemail. The emails were in opposition, they were forwarded to the Planning Commission and are part of the record, and I will play the voicemail for you here in just a minute. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Dubodz, I'm calling on case number LDC 21-00031, public comment. I was aware that the building that's being proposed in the warehouses here was owned prior to any of the housing in Argos, just seems to be a very odd mix of residential and industrial. It appears that, you know, you guys are going to go forward building these big ugly warehouses here, that it really does not mix well with million-dollar homes right down the street. Ultimately, you probably should have never allowed Argos to be built in the first place, and then you should have just built industrial complex buildings all the way down the side of the I-80 here. So that being said, that you did allow the Argos complex to go in, it just does not appear that building two large, huge industrial warehouses is really going to suit the neighborhood, the traffic, the noise, possible crime, they want to put a park on the back west side of the facility facing housing with benches, that's only going to attract drive-bys on the I-80 to picnic there and camp, as well as allow teenagers to congregate at night. Anyway, so I would strongly support you not allowing the development of these warehouses and just continue further mixed residential would be a much better option for property values, aesthetics, turning a beautiful area into a ugly warehouse area. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope you take it to heart.
Okay, that's it for public comment, I did not receive any public comment cards for this item.
Does anybody wish to speak under public comment? Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions of the applicant or of Nathan, who'd like to get us started. Sir, if you wanted to speak, we just closed public comment, did you want to speak on the project?
We're not hearing you very well.
Oh, sorry, so you need to fill out a comment card for Michelle.
Okay.
We're going to open public comment again? Is that okay?
Go ahead and make a public comment.
Okay, go ahead, you can speak first and then you can.
Speak first and then fill out the comment card.
And then you can fill out the comment card, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Basically, my wife sent in the email.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
And I am Walt Voit, we own the house at 100 Scott, so we're right on the closest to this thing. The other warehouses that are to the north are all sunken down, you can barely see the roofs. Looks great, blends in, no big deal. We look at the mountain to the south of us, and we better take a picture of it, because we'll probably never see it again. Forty feet to 45 feet of warehouse within a very close to our house, we will not be able to see the mountains at all in the south direction. So we're very much against it for several different reasons, one of them being the view, the aesthetics. The other thing is the increased traffic on, very frankly, a very small overpass that goes into that area and serves everyone there with all services, emergency, fire, police, whatever. If something was to happen to that overpass, such as a truck having a fire, or even vandalism... If something was to happen to that overpass, such as a truck having a fire, or even vandalism or an explosion, that whole area would be devastated, because hardly anyone knows about the little road that goes back down the other side into Verde. Even the employees of Covelas don't know about that, most of them. I'm really surprised, but that's the truth that I've found in the last 10 years. I don't know what else to say. We bought a house $800,000, thinking this is really a nice community. We didn't expect to be in a warehouse. I've owned businesses myself. Frankly, I'm one of those hated Californians that moved here, but we love the city of Reno. Please don't let this happen to this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Thank you. Please fill out a comment card when you're done, too. State your name for the record, please.
Certainly. I'm Mrs. Voight, Walt's wife, and I have some additional concerns. They were mentioned earlier, the herd of deers, the environmental impact. Thank you, dear. And I'm amazed at the work that you all do here. I'm greatly impressed, and I'm not used to public speaking, but I just would like to say thank you for being our Planning Commission, and I guess you're representing the City Council? Is that right?
City of Reno.
Staff.
Okay. City of Reno, okay. Thank you. It's wonderful to know that we have people who are concerned about the city, and we appreciate an opportunity to be here before you. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a gentleman in the back, I believe. If you want to fill out a comment card with Michelle, please.
No, I already did.
So, he already did, but it's for the next item, so I still need a comment card for you. Oh, okay.
Wait till the next one, then?
Yes, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Okay, did anybody else want to speak under this item? Okay, we're going to close public comment, again. Bring it back to the Commission for Questions. Commissioner Velto?
Yes, thank you. Questions for Nathan? So, this 5.2 is a zoning map amendment going from hotel commercial to mixed-use suburban. So when we're evaluating the findings as to whether there should be a zoning map amendment, is it important for us to be thinking about what the plausible use could be under hotel commercial compared to mixed-use suburban?
Thank you, Commissioner Velto, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Yes, the Planning Commission wants to evaluate all the allowed uses under both the existing designations as well as what is proposed under the hotel-casino that is designed for destination gaming, and that is primarily the intent of that district. And as I mentioned earlier, with the code update, the area is assigned a gaming overlay designation, and the conforming zoning moving forward under the new designations would be mixed-use suburban under this site.
So if we're looking at the findings, there was a comment made about mitigating, about the traffic impacts, which goes to one of the findings. I haven't personally seen a hotel project since I've been on the commission, and if I was, I might have been absent, but what is the likely effect of traffic for a project that's zoned HC as opposed to a project that is zoned MS?
Well, looking at the range of uses, the non-restricted gaming with the gaming overlay could be allowed in the mixed-use suburban. Generally speaking, the uses allowed in that designation are commercial-oriented and generally would have less impact than that gaming use.
Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you, Nathan. So, I'd like to explore your answer a little bit to Commissioner Velto's comments. I mean, primarily, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of other uses just from what's allowed in HC that are kind of community-serving, so things like restaurants and different associated uses. It's just not gaming uses that exist, right?
Correct. There are a limited amount generally intended to support the gaming, but the purpose statement of the hotel-casino designation is for destination resorts. But you're correct, the zoning, if applications came in, it would allow for a limited amount of other types of commercial uses.
And then, just expanding our scope a little bit away from this particular site, but looking at what's happening, you know, both north of, I guess, happening in every direction across the freeway and, you know, east-west, but we're putting in a lot of uses. Do you feel that, you know, do we have sufficient arterial commercial for the amount of units that we're putting in there in the right places? I mean, this is, we're faced with a great, this is an exercise of our legislative authority as to what uses should be on this site, not necessarily what the applicant is requesting. But, you know, what could have gone there? It seems like this would be a particular site, given everything that's happening around it, to use for those kind of, you know, restaurant and other kind of community-serving entities rather than another warehouse.
Well, the warehouse would be a specific use allowed under the mixed-use suburban. Other commercial-oriented uses could be facilitated in the mixed-use suburban designation. In the greater Morton-Son-Garson area, there is, under the proposed amendments to the Santara project and Planning Area 3 south of I-80, it does maintain about a 10-acre commercial site along what would be a minor arterial, an extension of the Boomtown-Garson to that area. So, there is remaining commercial to serve, but that is certainly something to consider for the Planning Commission on maintaining that kind of freeway-oriented, commercial intensity.
But also community-serving, not just freeway-oriented.
I would add, too, that recent approvals of the Verde crossing, it did include a neighborhood casino, but there are also commercial-serving shell uses closer to Boomtown.
Okay, thank, let me just, and I don't know if this is for you, Nathan, or for Angela, but, you know, the status of, and we heard Ken talk about a little bit, the community process that is going on. Has that process gotten to a place where they're talking about, you know, what kind of uses? You can maybe inform us a little bit on where the community process is, particularly if they've talked about this particular site and...
Yeah, I think you're referring to the text amendment that City Council initiated for the Morton-Garson overlay district? Or are you talking about the broader neighborhood outreach that will be kicking off citywide starting this fall?
How about if I go with both and cover both bases?
Yes. The text amendment was very narrowly defined on what the changes were to be. So that will be coming before you in July. We have held, I think, three stakeholder meetings with the identified stakeholder group. That includes property owners and Verde residents, and so this change of zoning was not part of that discussion. There were no changes of zoning as part of that discussion. It was more specific to some of the mapping concerns, some of the locations of ridge lines, better defining what the intent was when that document was written, matching up, again, some of the legislative history. Separate from that, then, is the broader neighborhood outreach process. So we are going to be doing citywide a neighborhood engagement process, where we're going to go neighborhood by neighborhood, and we've established all these different geographic areas, and that will take several years to get through. So that is a completely separate process. This area is not one of the targeted areas that we plan to hit in the next 12 months, because it is already defined with the overlay district, the Morton-Son-Garson overlay district. We don't intend to go in and make any more changes, you know, unless we see a lot of interest from the property owners. But again, because this was defined through a settlement agreement, that development pattern is already established, and so we're not intending to make changes to that. And a lot of this area's already been proposed for development, and now we're seeing it actually come forward with a lot of these tentative maps that you guys have already voted on.
Commissioners, other questions? Okay, I have a quick question. Nathan. So, with the previous item, the recommendation that we were making to cancel with some of the cleanup is to get rid of the hotel-casino zoning in that, if that's accurate. Is that accurate?
No, I believe the amendment discussed was to allow the mixed-use suburban designation as conforming in the Morton-Son-Garson.
Yeah, so the hotel commercial will go away. Is that accurate?
That, correct. That zoning designation no longer exists in our zoning code.
Okay.
And so we updated our master plan to reflect that change.
So, I'm just, I guess I'm having a hard, we're changing the hotel-casino zoning, which isn't going to exist in the master plan anymore, too. Help me understand this really quick, please.
Yeah, so the Morton-Son-Garson overlay district as a whole is unique, and when we went through, when we did our zoning code update, and we changed some of the zoning categories, so, right, some categories completely went away. Hotel-casino is one of those categories that went away, and if you had zoning that was hotel-casino, it converted to general commercial. However, because this overlay district is unique, we didn't make any changes. So this was not part of the citywide zoning code update. But the first step for us to do is to change the master plan and make those changes. Again, what Kelly just went through, kind of showed you what those changes are, that text amendment that's coming before you next month will also make some of these other changes that have to go away. One of the problems is that we have a zoning map embedded in our zoning code. We don't normally put maps inside our zoning code, but in this overlay district, 20 years ago, we put a map in our zoning code. So in order to change the zoning, anywhere in here, you had to do a text amendment. It's an anomaly, not something I would recommend that we ever do again, because it created a lot of problems. But as part of the master plan cleanup that Kelly's talking about, that is step one. Then the text amendment for the overlay district that you'll see next month is step two. So what is before you tonight is in line with the master plan that you guys just voted on, that text amendment to our master plan. So that would basically allow us to change the hotel-casino designation through this zoning change process to the MS zoning.
Okay, so my next question is MS, mixed-use suburban, is part of the recommendation in the previous one, in the previous item 5.1 that'll go to council. That would have to, council's going to have to approve that if, to make this relevant, correct? This is also a recommendation to council?
That's correct. And in fact, any, even the base zoning map amendments in the Morton-Son-Garson require a text amendment. So if council were to ultimately approve this or any other zone change in the Morton-Son-Garson district, it also requires a text amendment adopted by council in order for it to be effectuated.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioners, other questions?
Commissioner Dragic, if I can, Madam Chair. So just because I was processing all that, so if we don't approve this tonight, it's going to maintain its arterial and hotel-casino zoning?
So you guys are a recommending vote, whether you approve or deny, this automatically goes to City Council, so whatever you recommend, again, is what they will be voting on to approve or deny.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Discussion? Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. Big surprise. You know, to some extent, Reno's growth has really changed the community of Verde, and we can see it every time you drive by the highway, there's more housing, there's more development. And I don't think that this change, and in particular what it allows to happen, like changing so that another warehouse can go in as we see our next option is what the community needs, or at least the analysis of, an overarching analysis of what should be, you know, what zoning should remain so that things like community facilities, or, you know, arterial commercial, or other uses that are necessary for the community, not necessarily just this, what this one, you know, what this particular landowner wants to do with it. And I think that's a key part of our judgment as to when we make these kind of legislative decisions, like zoning is, that we need to take into account. And, you know, I just don't think it, you know, we, Verde has taken it in shorts for City of Reno's expansion plans, and I think we need to do a better job at community planning for the expansions that we're doing out there, so it's not just warehousing and houses. Because that's, it seems like that's what are the principal drivers here, and I wouldn't support the conversion or the change from HC to a type of use that, or land use designation that would allow the, you know, moving away from that kind of specific community-supporting services. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson?
Excuse me, just a real quick question before I go into this, just for clarification's sake, and Angela or Nathan can answer this. I think I heard somebody say that all of the hotel commercial, hotel-casino zoning has been changed to general commercial throughout the code, everywhere that's not here. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. So, thank you. So I want to maybe respond to Commissioner Marshall, because I completely understand his concerns, but what I'm doing is looking at the mixed suburban, or the proposed zoning here. When we look at the actual land use, it's actually immediately adjacent to general commercial when you scroll down the list. And all of the items that you're talking about with respect to community support, which is businesses, you know, which is restaurants, which is general commercial items, housing, which, as we heard, we can't get there anyway because of the Morton-Son-Garson, but all of the items that I think you're hoping to see, and I think we're all hoping to see as part of the development, and I think it was a great question about what's allowed or what's still included in the plan, and thank you, Nathan, for pointing out what's still out there. But when I look at this, I'm looking at essentially what that land is zoned now, which is if nothing happened, you know, the hotel-casino or the arterial commercial, which is also general commercial, the uses for what the zoning is proposed to be versus what they are now are almost identical with respect to what's permitted, what requires conditional use permit, all of the things, regardless of what we're, you know, about to see, if we're using the metric that you are in terms of what we want to see and what's possible, what's proposed before us really hardly changes that, based on what the code and what our land use designations are now. And that was what I was looking at, was trying to understand. If we can't have hotel-casino, if it is truly general commercial, and all of the things that we want to have in the community and support and recommend in the community are allowed under what's proposed tonight. So from the discussion standpoint, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with exactly what you're saying with respect to how that land should be used, but I don't think that then translates into an opposition to what's proposed before us, because those land use, allowable uses are allowed and encouraged in what's proposed before us this evening, from purely a zoning change standpoint. So, that's my comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Munoz?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Do we have any more discussion? Okay. I like it.
Commissioner Munoz?
Commissioner Munoz, for the record, based on compliance with applicable findings for case number LDC 21-00031, I move to recommend city accountable, approve the zoning MAC amendments by ordinance, and I can meet the findings.
Thank you. We have a second?
Commissioner Gower, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Marshall?
Yep.
Oh. Michelle, can you help us, please?
Be happy to.
Kathleen Taylor?
Yes.
John Marshall?
No.
Biddy Draculich?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Alex Valtto?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Moving on to item 5.3, this is case number LDC 21-00057, Legislative Center I-80 Phase Two. This is a request for a conditional use permit, alternative and alternative equivalent compliance. Looks like we have a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you, again, for the record, Ken Crater. So before you, on this case, is a conditional use permit, which will allow 24-hour operation within the facility, and then also alternative equivalent compliance. And I'll get into that, but it has to do with transparency requirements within the mixed-use suburban zoning designation. We also have a major site plan review for development within 150 feet of residentially zoned property, but we are moving that up to part of the conditional use permit as allowed by code. We did a very comprehensive noise study on this project, and that included going out and looking at existing noise levels in the neighborhood. And we also went to a very busy industrial site and got noise readings from that site, which is a 24-hour facility, to understand what the impacts of 24-hour warehouse distribution light manufacturing facility are. Essentially, from the noise study, we found that not only do we comply with code, but we're actually lower noise levels than the existing noise generated in the neighborhood from Interstate 80, Cabela's, and the Boomtown area. As far as the alternative equivalent compliance within the mixed-use suburban code, it requires on a building like this that 25% of the street frontage be transparent with storefronts, windows, glass doors, et cetera. And if you look at this site, we're actually elevated about 12 feet below Interstate 80. So it certainly wouldn't make any sense to have any windows at ground level on Interstate 80, because frankly, with our landscape screening, you wouldn't even see them. And so instead, you'll see when we get to the elevations, we've got some clear-story windows higher up, which will create that transparency effect from Interstate 80. And along Boomtown-Garson Road, we've got a significant amount of landscape screening. We put in berms to better protect the neighborhood. And so same thing, in terms of meeting the intent of that transparency requirement, we moved those clear-story windows a little higher up. This is a cut film app for the site, and this shows a lot. You can see the existing single-family residential on the left side of that exhibit. And so we basically created a very large landscaped open area, which incorporates the SFR 6, which we're retaining, and allows us to put in a six-foot-high earthen berm, which is a blue squiggly line. And on top of that, we've got a four-foot stacked rock wall. So essentially, we're creating a 10-foot screen from those existing single-family residential neighborhoods. The blue is a little bit of fill material, the red on the right side is cut where we have the detention basin. But by and large, the green, there's very little grading required on this site. And essentially, what we did is we tried to lower the buildings as much as possible, again, to minimize the height impacts for the neighborhood. You can see that there's two buildings on the site. There's no loading docks on the west side facing the residential. There's an employee parking. We're going to make that access, emergency access, only because there was concerns about headlights shining into the homes on Scott Court. And we will actually have a solid screen on that gate, so the headlights can't shine through, and put some box heads around that to really create an effective screen. So the loading docks are in between the buildings and facing Cabela's. You can see from the preliminary landscape plan, there's going to be a virtual forest on this site. We learned that folks, including NDOT's landscape architect, were very happy with the landscaping that Cabela's did to screen that property. However, we also heard that they wished that they'd have some deciduous trees. So we brought in a lot of deciduous trees that'll provide spring and fall color, flowering trees, and then also just larger deciduous trees with different variety and different colors. The folks that live on the west property line expressed a desire to have smaller flowering trees, so we did that. They wanted the smaller trees, so it doesn't block their view of the mountains in the winter, but to give them that, again, spring color with flowers and fall colors from various leaf patterns. The single black line that runs through here, the solid black line, that's a trail system. And within the Morton-Garson, Morton-Son-Garson overlay district, there's an actual underpass on this site. And so as part of the trail system, it calls for a connection to that underpass, which would allow access not only from folks at this site, but the adjoining neighborhood to cross under the freeway and access both the public lands, as well as other commercial activities on the south side of the site. And this here shows that emergency access, again, putting a solid gate to screen the headlights, will do a turnaround. So if somebody goes down through that parking area and can't find a space, they can quickly turn around and not have to jockey back and forth within that tight area, and then creating a dense hedge to screen the headlights around that area. Again, you can see the earthen berm and the stacked rock wall to the left. And we also just recently agreed to also put a four-foot-high stacked rock wall in front of warehouse building one, to create a more natural look, and to, again, do a better job of screening and buffering that building from the homes on Scott Court. There's a lot of excess freeway right-of-way in this area. And the reason I spoke with NDOT's supervisor of landscape architect is there was a desire on the part of the neighborhood and us to landscape a lot of that excess right-of-way, which would provide for additional screening and just help beautify the neighborhood. And I actually have an email from NDOT. They were very supportive of working with us to landscape that freeway right-of-way to increase the amount of screening, again, with the caveat that we add deciduous trees into our landscape mix. And right where that approximate location of Ped Bicycle Trail, that's where the underpassing is, which is built for the farmer and rancher that own that land to move cattle and farm equipment from one side of the freeway to the other. That's a picture of the underpass. It's perfect to serve as a connection for that trail system. These are the building elevations, and we have added clear-story windows in on the two frontages. The smaller-length frontages are the ones, the north and the south facing Boomtown-Garson Road and the freeway. And so you can see those clear-story windows, which will be more visible from the freeway with the elevation difference and Boomtown-Garson Road with the birmingham, the stacked rock wall, and the landscape screening. This is the larger building that's closer to Cabela's. Again, you can see the clear-story windows to meet the intent of the transparency requirements. This is a photometric plan, and we will have 12-foot maximum high lights in the parking area west of the building, and 25 elsewhere. And per the photometric plan, there's basically zero-foot candles that cross west of our lights. They will be fully shielded, dark sky lighting, so the lights will only shine where we need the lighting for safety and security. And this is a rendering to show the impacts of the earthen berm and the stacked rock wall. You can see down on the lower right portion that this photo was taken just from the north side of the first home on Phildigo Way, right up against Boomtown-Garson Road. And you can see that with the earthen berm and the stacked rock wall, it very effectively screens the building, but leaves the view of the mountains to the south and the east, which we knew was very important to the neighbors. The next photo is right between the existing fourth home and the fifth home that's currently under construction. Again, you can see it screens the building, but leaves the view of the mountains and the hillside for the neighbors. And then this is a rendering, looking from the freeway heading eastbound into town. And you can see the landscape screening, the stacked rock wall, and all the windows that we have on the site. And we knew that we wanted to do something that created a good look for folks entering into the Reno area, coming from California to do business, to visit, whatever. So we did, put a lot of thought into the architecture. And then also, the colors you can see are very natural to match the landscaping and the surroundings. We didn't go with any bright-type colors or just a dull white or beige color. Traffic is a big issue. And again, some of the concerns that I heard from the Planning Commission was what should be the best use for this site. But reality is, is this type of facility will help with the jobs housing balance in the Verdi area. It will reduce trip lengths by allowing folks that live in the Verdi area to work within their own neighborhood. And as I've learned from my long tenure as a traffic engineer, most folks that work at a warehouse like to live close to work. And in fact, if you go to RTC, their average trip length is very short, only a couple miles for warehouse distribution light manufacturing facility. So that tells you that ultimately, this facility will be filled with people that live in the Verdi area. But more important, I think, is the traffic. It was brought up that this is right now really the only entry into this Meridian 120 development. And it's hard to find a lower chip generating use than a distribution light manufacturing facility. If this were to become office, you generate roughly four times as much traffic, possibly 4,000 trips per day compared to the roughly 870 for the distribution facility. If it was commercial, it could generate upwards of 10,000 trips a day. And if it was a hotel casino or resort facility, depending on the array of uses, it would be closer to the commercial facility in terms of trip generation. So I think in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood, this is a great use. And hopefully, that's why there's not a roomful of people tonight, is I think a lot of folks that live in the neighborhood think, you know, this isn't a bad use. We get all that landscape buffering and screening. We have lower traffic volumes. We get the jobs housing balance opportunity. And there is 25,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial plant in the Boomtown facility just to the east, which, again, that keeps the traffic further away from this residential neighborhood. And if you saw from the site plan, we not only made the one driveway emergency access, but because trucks typically circulate in a counterclockwise fashion when they enter an industrial facility, and that's so when the truck driver's backing up, he can look over his left side and see more clearly out the window. That works better from a counterclockwise circulation. So the vast majority of trucks will enter in that east driveway next to Cabela's, and really only trucks exiting from between the two will be the traffic in that center driveway. So this is also a use that minimizes the amount of traffic close to that Meridian 120 neighborhood. And we think that's important, too. Again, as far as the comparisons, 870, the truck plaza that was approved generates, generated about 3650. So this project will be a significant reduction in trips, not only compared to what was previously approved on the site, but most any other use that you'd put on the site. Even though residential isn't allowed under the Morton-Son-Garson overlay plan, if you develop the site with, say, 10,000 square foot lots, it would still generate more traffic than the proposed project before you tonight. Again, the major issues, working closely with NDOT and RTC, we will continue that process, just like we did in the North Valleys on Lemon Drive and Military. The traffic study that RTC did in that area was very positive. It generated projects in that following year for safety and some capacity improvements. They're now signalizing intersections. And I see the same sort of process here. And I think that first meeting we had with RTC and NDOT was good, because we brought a lot of stakeholders to the table. And I think RTC has a very good mailing list now, when they start their actual process for that Verdi study. Less water, less sewer, no school impacts, significant amounts of landscaping and great connectivity to the underpass under I-80. Lighting, I think this is a great project as far as lighting with our lighting plan, our low light heights, the shielding. It will have a minimal impact on the dark skies and on the adjoining residential neighborhoods. This will not have as tall of ceiling heights, racking heights as a typical industrial building. We're only going with about a 32 compared to a 35 or 40-foot racking height, so that'll help keep the building heights down, the jobs housing balance I talked about. But this will forever hopefully eliminate the truck stop, a hotel casino, or big-box retail, which would clearly have more impacts than what we're proposing before you tonight, while also generating a decent amount of tax revenue to help bring more services to the Verdi area. It is consistent with the Reno master plan. We are fully in compliance with Title 18. We do mitigate the traffic impacts based on the applicable standards of the City of Reno and Regional Transportation Commission. And it absolutely provides a safe environment for pedestrians and people on bicycles, especially with our trail system and our connection to that underpass. We believe all the findings can be made for the conditional use permit, for the alternative equivalent compliance. And again, I just want to stress that I think compared to what you could put on this site, whether it was mixed-use suburban, hotel casino, arterial commercial, I think the low traffic volumes, that jobs housing balance, the landscaping that we had, I would just think, I would be hard-pressed to develop a site that would have less impacts on the adjoining residential neighborhood and be a better fit for the Verdi community. And I think that showed through our public outreach process. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan?
All right. Hello again. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As Ken summarized, this is a 26.9-acre site. The requests are for conditional use permits for development of an industrial facility within 150 feet of residential zoning and business operations between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The application's also requesting a new provision under our new code called alternative equivalent compliance, which allows for variation of certain design considerations with the Planning Commission approval. The zoning on the site would be MS, mixed-use suburban. If council were to adopt that, this project is conditioned that it has to be zoned mixed-use suburban in order to move forward. And a little bit of background on the site. I think we already discussed a little bit of the Morton-Son-Garson overlay district, which was adopted in 2003, and created, adopted sort of a hodgepodge of land uses for planning area two, including industrial destination casino resorts, uses like Boomtown and single-family neighborhood designations. Historically, on the site, the county approvals had approved a truck stop and casino associated with the truck stop. In 2013, the City of Reno adopted a special use permit relocating. It's moved several times over several decades. The last designation was on the subject site in 2013 for a 24-hour truck stop and casino. That being said, that entitlement expired in December of 2020. In 2015, the Boomtown Industrial Park to the north approved about 850,000 square feet with the industrial development to the north of the site. And in 2016, the Meridian 120 North tentative map was approved. There were specific conditions related to compatibility with what at that time was a truck stop that included a six-foot sound wall with birmingham and notice for future property owners to advise them of the industrial use to the east. Back to the project itself, the request at hand this evening. Again, it's two buildings. One building is 186,000 square feet. That's closest to the Meridian 120 North subdivision building two, 258,500 square feet. The site design has a north-south building orientation with sealed truck bays internal and truck bays facing east towards the Cabela's site. It does propose a comprehensive trail network around the site and creating that required connectivity in the Morton-Son-Garson overlay to planning area three through that freeway underpass. The building design meets vertical and horizontal articulation on all sides. Building heights for building one, maximum of 42 feet. for building one, maximum of 42 feet. Building two, 45 feet. For comparison, in the mixed-use suburban zone, maximum height without additional approvals is 55 feet and 65 feet in both the AC and HC zones that are there currently. Again, they, Ken touched on their request for alternative design. The mixed-use suburban has a ground floor transparency requirement, which is strictly on the ground floor. Based on the site design, grading, the proposed mitigations with berming and its visibility from adjacent road networks, you wouldn't be able to see that from the public. So what they're proposing is to add clear story windows at the top and some additional glazing to meet the same intent, provide additional daylighting, and allow that building transparency where it can be seen from the public right of way. Land use compatibility, what's proposed is building one would be setback 195 to 410 feet from western residential property, a six-foot berm with four-foot rock wall to the west. Existing subdivision, as I mentioned, already has a sound wall. This would complement that. The landscape berm in front of building two, and I don't think Ken touched on it, but was proposed an enhanced condition to add a rock wall along building one facing Boomtown Garson Road. Westernmost access as emergency only and screened, no trucks would be circulating in that way. Sound walls and screening of internal truck bays so that you can't see them from the right of way. Enhanced landscaping in the NDOT right of way. And all traffic within the Mortons and Garson, as the commission is aware, must maintain a level of service C. RTC operating standards would otherwise be level of service D. So key conditions of approval, Condition 6 would limit the building heights to 45 feet, and that would include architectural features and mechanical equipment. This is from feedback that we have heard from the community on this project and on other projects, that additional height would not be allowed per Condition 6, and that would include mechanical equipment. Condition number nine ensures implementation of the proposed landscaping in the NDOT right of way. They will need NDOT's approval, and that is a condition of approval if adopted. Condition 10 limits sign area and hours of illumination for north-facing signs, but they're not operating past, or illuminated past those extended hours. Condition 11 enhances the limitation of standard hours of construction to include Sundays and state holidays. That was also from feedback from the community. Condition 12 restricts the westernmost access point as emergency only with screening. And Condition number 13 ensures implementation of proposed mitigation, sound walls, berms, landscaping, et cetera, particularly those incorporated in the sound study. And if Planning Commission were to move towards approving this, we'd recommend adding, consistent with original project material and modifications proposed at the Planning Commission hearing. And if I could switch to the overhead, Michelle?
Get my orientation. Again, the one modification would be that rock wall along building one, presented to the Planning Commission here. If Planning Commission moves forward, we'd recommend that that be included in your approval. With that, that concludes staff presentation, and I am available for any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, let's do disclosures. Commissioner Gower?
Hey, Madam Chair. I am familiar with the site and received and read emails.
Commissioner Veltor, the same?
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures?
Commissioner Marshall, same disclosures?
Commissioner Dragic, same disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, do we have any additional public comment besides request to speak forms?
We did receive three emails. They were forwarded to the Planning Commission, and they have been entered as part of the record.
No voicemails?
No voicemails received for this item.
Okay, so we have a couple of requests to speak forms, and I'm not going to do these names right, so I apologize. The first one is DeDeir Mahfus? Yeah, this is our first in-person meeting. You could have been like Smith.
My name's DeDei. It's DeDei, French, and last name is Nafis. I'm here with my wife, Leslie. We also own a house here in Meridian 120. We do have some concerns. I have to say upfront, Ken, this is the first time I've seen you, but I see the emails going back and forth between Ken, and he's been very good about getting back to us as an association, filling us in on our concerns and addressing them. We appreciate that. I think like Boyd said earlier, we still have concerns. Big concern here is, and Ken just showed us the 10-foot wall. Well, if it's a 45-foot building, that 10-foot wall is not going to hide it. We all know that, right? Our question is, why can't we bury it? Why can't we dig up that lot and put it lower? I don't know if that's been addressed or looked at. I don't know if there's a reason why it can't be done, but that would help. That's one. Noise is going to be a factor. We're going to have trucks in there. And something that wasn't addressed earlier was, I think you all were going to approve a 24-hour, it's going to be a 24-hour operation. We're opposed to that as well. We don't want any noise after a certain time here in our neighborhood. Another major factor for us, there's only one way in and out of our complex. There's 30, I'm sorry, 300 and something homes in there right now. It's going to be another 97, I think, being built on the freeway. You all have seen the dirt being moved, I'm sure. Again, there's only one way in and out of our complex, and that's through Boomtown Garson Road. So we have issues with that. We're not sure where the traffic people are in this whole process, but I would think that there needs to be another egress in the event we have emergencies, fire being one of them. As you know, that whole hillside burned 10 or 15 years ago, I think it was. So we're concerned about that as well. We like, again, we like the plans and all. We just need some adjustments made to those things, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Leslie, did you want to speak, too?
No, he addressed.
The next public comment is Walt Voight. You have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Walt Voight. We live at 100 Scott, which is right across from the little emergency exit. Should there be an emergency in that factory or the area, and we have semi-trucks pouring out of there, it's been mentioned, 875 trips. How the heck would we have a chance of getting out in my little Toyota Tacoma or another passenger vehicle? I owned a business where we had delivery vehicles. We had 18 of them. When something happened, very frankly, a small car does not come out very well at all, even with any commercial When you take a semi, an 18-wheeler, it doesn't mix with residential. It doesn't mix with people walking their dogs, their kids, and very frankly, not all kids. As you probably know, because you weren't one at one time, you always didn't do what your mom and your dad told you. I didn't. I had a lot of fun. I have some scars to prove it. I'm fortunate. I still have my hands and legs and fingers. So all of us have been through this. I hope every one of us has children that will live through the process of becoming adults. This is a community of approximately 400 homes. If there's three people per home, that's a lot of people. To go out on that little bitty road, Garson Road, and then get across that overpass to get on the freeway to go anywhere can be a task. In an emergency, I think it'd be a very, very poor choice. So we need a little attention there. Personally, I would love to see the exit, the emergency exit, around the other side of the building and out by Cabela's. On the back part of the property, there appears to be a lot of room that isn't being used. The gas station over there has all kinds of asphalt all over the place, but no roads on it. You try to drive through it, as I've done many times, the stop signs usually knocked over some of the, take a look sometime. It really needs Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlie Voight. Oh, you're not speaking. Okay, but let's see, is in opposition, and the comment is the industrial facility. Do we have any other public comment or request to speak forms?
No, I do not.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or Nathan, who'd like to start. Commissioner Veltor?
My question's for the applicant. So I want to talk to you about the, sorry, where's it at? The conditional use permit. So what hap, so you're seeking conditional use permit for warehouses to be within 150 feet of residential and then expanding the time at which they can operate? What does your project look like if that's not approved?
For the record, Ken Crater. And again, this major site plan review is for the project within 150 feet of residential. And again, as our site plan laid out, Michelle, can you put up the landscape plan again? We have roughly 200 feet from the building to the properties to the west and almost 120 feet across the street to the homes in the cul-de-sac. And on the south side of our west property line, we have 400 feet. So you can see that we set that building back a substantial amount. But I believe the way the code reads is, since our project is within 150 feet, without that, we wouldn't have a project, period in the story. It's just adjacency within that 150 feet. And the conditional use permit for 24 hours, that's very important. And the way these facilities operate, we have sealed dock doors. And so when a truck backs up to the loading dock, it backs up to a sealed dock door. So all the activities occurring inside the building. And that's why these distribution and light manufacturing facilities are so quiet because of the technology on that sealed dock door. And I can point to several examples, warehouses in South Meadows, our recent project on Lemon and Military, where warehouses join residential, and it is actually highly compatible because this is a very quiet type of use. And again, going back to even if I built residential homes, you could have people holding parties, you could have people starting their cars up with loud engines in the middle of the night, any type of use is going to generate noise. But by and large, these industrial facilities are very quiet, compatible use.
Thank you. And I have a follow-up for Nathan. So where I'm looking at the findings for the conditional use permit, the finding I'm stuck on is the finding about the proposed land uses and product design is compatible with surrounding development. So I think the language I've seen in other places is compatible with surrounding land uses. Why is this language different? And is there any basis for that? Is that supposed to affect the way that we determine whether that finding's made?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I mean, that is the standard CUP finding. We take it at verbatim, that we're looking at the compatibility with the surrounding development, existing, I would infer that in proposed compatibility of the proposal with the surrounding development.
I guess what I'm getting at is that that language seems to be more focused on what actually is surrounding the area as opposed to what is allowed to be surrounding the area? Is that something you would agree with? Am I misreading that maybe?
I would agree with that statement.
And how is staff able to support that specific finding?
I think when looking at the proposed mitigations as outlined, that the use with the existing mitigations is compatible in terms of impacts of noise, impacts of visual mitigation, enhanced landscaping, and the like, from a compatibility standard, from what's proposed and as conditioned, I can make the findings as a staff member evaluating the project.
Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioner Munoz?
Madam Chair, thank you. Actually, this is for Angela. I'm wondering if you know what the four warehouses to the north are 24-hour uses?
They are. I'm looking at Nathan. I believe that was his project a couple of years ago.
No, that was, burn close. Nathan Gilbert, yes, they're a 24-hour operation.
Is that it, Commissioner Munoz? Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Wasn't even leaning forward on this one yet. Nathan, I think I'll start with you. I have a, and maybe Michelle, if you can just forward this through to the site plan. The condition that's on there regarding the westernmost entrance, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the site, excuse me, I'm looking at the site plan, and I guess I'm trying to understand. So there's no entrance allowed from Boomtown Garson Road at that western entrance per the condition?
That's correct.
So all of that parking that's there is staff parking, the access to which occurs via one of the other two entrances and wraps around the building?
That's correct.
And I'm looking at that, and I can see how from the east that can work. But if the central access is used, we're basically routing personal vehicles through truck traffic areas. And the same thing could happen even on the east, depending on how they come in. Is that a fair statement?
I think I would defer that to the applicant. That was a staff concern, but that proposed mitigation was specifically proposed by the applicant's representative.
Okay.
As far as the functionality with the truck interaction and the warehouse distribution use, I would have to refer to Ken.
Okay. Well, then I'll bring Ken up because I have another question for him. So Ken, you don't have to respond to that one. I was more concerned from staff standpoint. The comment was made, and you brought up the fact that the building is set 12 feet lower than the interstate. But I'm also seeing from the site cuts that the building is set eight feet higher than Boomtown that the building is set eight feet higher than Boomtown Garson. So, is there a reason why you focused more on concealing the building from the freeway than you did from the access road for the building?
Yes. So, the only place we have that elevation difference on Boomtown Garson is at the far east end. And that's because Boomtown Garson drops in elevation at that point. In fact, there's about an eight-foot elevation difference between that existing drive aisle and our site. So, we're actually gonna be cutting that site down as much as we can for trucks and cars to be able to get in on that east driveway. But our site just happens to be elevated about eight feet above the easterly drive aisle for Cabela's.
So, which, I appreciate that. But that doesn't at all jive with the cut-and-fill plan that you're showing me that has the entire northern side of your site receiving multiple upwards of five feet of fill?
There's a hole there. There's a big hole.
The existing hole. So, in looking at it, I'm seeing that there... So, you're basically putting the elevation of the buildings at an elevation that works based on the eastern entrance of the site?
Well, eastern central. I mean, we've got to make grade with all the driveways on Boomtown Garson Road, right? So, we had to make sure that the grades work for all three of those driveways. And that's one of the reasons we looked at splitting this into two buildings. We have a little bit more flexibility in terms of varying the height elevation of the two buildings to step down towards a Cabela's site. But we did work to get both buildings as low in elevation because we also have other constraints. We have existing water lines that we had to be... Sewer lines that we had to have gravity flow, so...
Understood. So, you've set the grade at what works for the existing site conditions?
Exactly.
Okay. And then, I guess, just, I will follow up then. The concern that I raised about the staff access to the parking lot and even the future parking lot seems to me quite convoluted with respect to not being able to use the entrance or the exit that seems to be the most direct and the safest route in to avoid any potential vehicle and truck conflicts? Is that...you know, the condition that's there appears to be one that was placed based on some very valid concerns from the neighbors? Is that...do you see that as having an impact on how this works functionally for the staff that's in the facility?
So, if you look at the site plan, we actually have an exterior drive aisle for passenger vehicles. So, all the employees will be directed to enter into the east driveway. And that will be in the employee procedure manuals and CCNRs. So, they will come in on that eastern driveway, stay in the drive aisle versus the trucks that will split off, and go into the loading dock areas or a truck that's driving around to the central facility. But it's very common to have, obviously, both passenger vehicles and truck traffic in an industrial site. Again, they're very low-volume facilities.
I understand that. The concern that I have is not with... I'm also looking at this as, you know, if there's a potential visitor. If I'm coming to visit the site and I see a parking area, when I'm looking on my map, that's on that side of the...it's on the west side of the building, I can't get into it. I see, you know, I understand from a staff standpoint. But any visitors that would be coming here, anybody that's looking for anything, that could be problematic. So, I just wanted to understand that from your standpoint.
And visitors are minimal. And again, you can give them directions.
Again, I understand that. And then, I guess, the last question I have, Madam Chair, if I can just go with one more. I am concerned, I guess, or I guess I'm questioning, and I'll throw this to you first, then I'll follow up with Nathan. The alternative compliance that we have for the...basically, the windows in the storefront into the building, it's 25% for the first floor based on the code that we have. And I'm assuming that's 25% for the main elevation. It's not all four sides, but it's the main elevation.
It's for the frontage.
And so, you're saying it's 25% of the frontage of the building is to have that? Because when I look at the elevations, the alternative compliance of 25% of that same amount in clear stories doesn't exist?
We almost meet the 25% requirement just with our storefronts on the corners of the building. So, we actually now exceed the 25% by adding those clear-story windows. So, we were like at 22%, 23% just with our storefront windows in the corners. So, adding the clear-story windows, we actually exceed that 25%.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nathan, question for you. I guess I'm still trying to understand. In my understanding of the intent of the requirement for the openings, the transparency into the building, to me, that is there in this zone because it's attempting to mitigate both from a vehicular and a pedestrian standpoint, a long, solid, non-transparent wall. It's not a question of, you know, the lighting into the space. It's an attempt to visually break it up. Am I correct in assuming, and I may be wrong, I'm just trying to understand, that 25% requirement, it's 25% of the elevation of the ground floor on the main elevation, the address elevation, if it were?
That's correct. On the building frontages, in this example, there are two. The freeway would also be included in that.
Okay. And so...okay.
Yes, the applicant was...that was brought to the applicant's attention, that they would need to redesign to meet that section of code. Or they could request from the planning commission the alternative equivalent compliance for the reasons that they stated.
Okay. And so, then, as presented on the elevations here, through your review, that meets the... So, it's not...at this point, it's not a question of meeting the 25%. It's a question of us reviewing what has been presented and determining if it is equivalent to what the code requires?
Yes. And specifically, it would be a ground floor. So, the applicant is suggesting that the majority of that ground floor wouldn't be able to be seen from the right-of-way. And the proposal would be to have that glazing in excess of that 25% at the top of the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Nathan. I think that's it for now, Madam Chair.
Other questions? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan, quick question for you when you're ready. Nathan, what's the... You said in your staff report, the response time for fire is nine minutes. Are we still...do we still have that six-minute threshold for response time?
That would be the master planned target objective.
Okay. And so, it's mitigated through sprinklers?
Through sprinkler mitigation. It would have to meet all other fire, you know, fire code standards.
Okay. Question on the traffic side. So, I think we're...we've had it hammered into our head, the LOC C for this area. Does LOS take into account the types of vehicles and the interactions of the types of vehicles? Or is it just strictly looking at volume?
My understanding is that that's based on volume. Wouldn't take the qualitative evaluation of the types of vehicles.
So, I guess, when we look at that finding that it mitigates traffic impacts, you know, we're given the information from Paul Saleggi or whoever the traffic engineer is with the LOS. But how do we take into account the interactions of the different types of vehicles? Particularly in this area, you know, where it's a fairly narrow space coming over that bridge, you know, two-lane road. And you've got an interaction of passenger vehicles and semi-truck traffic. How do we take that into account in our decision?
Well, I think the finding gives you the discretion to take that qualitative perspective. Our analysis is based on an engineering analysis, and that's the functionality of the road network, meaning adopted levels of service and all public works design standards.
And I guess to follow up on that, what... Remind me of the status of that bridge going over I-80. I know we've talked about it a lot with the development on the south side. Can you just remind me of where we're at there?
That bridge is subject to the Level of Service C standard as well. It is on NDOT's to-do list, if you will. But not based on level of service. That would be for, you know, the pedestrian-type amenities with current standards.
Isn't it on their to-do list because of... It's basically antiquated structurally? Do I remember that right?
I...my understanding is that the structural integrity is not in question.
So, maybe not the integrity. But it doesn't meet their current engineering standards for that type of structure?
My understanding, and I'll defer to Mike, Michelle, if I'm missing the mark, is that that would be for the pedestrian design component. But as far as the capacity to handle the level of service and vehicles on the bridge, that is not an issue.
Okay. So, it's strictly for the...to provide that shoulder capacity for pedestrians? Okay. I guess, speaking of pedestrians, the underpass... The last I remember, when we were looking at the development on the south side of the freeway there, there was some question in terms of the... I don't know if it was the legality of the easement or something to that effect, where there was some question as to whether it could be provided or it could accommodate pedestrian access legally? Is that still in question? Or am I, you know, not remembering that correctly?
I'm not familiar with that concern. But we have not received any comments. NDOT did a thorough review of this request. That wasn't an issue that was identified.
Okay. So, what's being proposed with the pedestrian access through that undercrossing? There's no issue?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
And it's a requirement in the M-God overlay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think that's all I've got. Thanks, Nathan.
Commissioner Veltou? Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Marshall? Well, then, I'm gonna go. Ken, I have a question. I think you might have answered it. This is based on one of the public comments. One of the comments was, "Why can't you just bury it?" And you might have answered it with your grading. But can you please do it again?
Yes. For the record, Ken Crater, we have this site as low as we can physically get it and still make driveway grades work, save for trucks and employees, to have utilities work, to have storm drain flow, sewer flow. Putting it any lower, you would immediately have serious issues with the safety and feasibility of the site.
Okay.
And important, too, the side across the street was lower, right? We didn't dig a hole. We worked with the existing elevation of the first phase. That just happened to be at a much lower elevation.
My next question is, if you could put up a map... I don't know if we have one. Of which stakeholders did you actually talk with or work with? I know there's some folks here that weren't part of the original stakeholder outreach because they might have been in some of the model homes. So, where is that? And do you have a map?
So, with COVID, and this being the first, like, live meeting, we reached out to the county. We worked with city staff. And our conversation with the Ward Five council member. And we were directed to work with a gal named Carly Borchardt. He used to be on the County Citizen Advisory Board and also the City of Reno Neighborhood Advisory Board. She has an email list of about 500 or 600 people in the Verdi area. We also had a stakeholder list from prior meetings that have come forth to the city. So, all the major property owners, agency officials. So, we basically worked with the city, the county, and Carly Borchardt to develop a very comprehensive stakeholder list for the overall Verdi area. So, it wasn't just like people within 750 feet. It was residents and business owners around the entire Verdi community.
So, the folks on...I might be getting this wrong. Gulf Canyon Court and Scott Court was...did you actually talk to those people?
We had, again, a general neighborhood meeting and noticed everyone within 750 feet of the project boundary. I've had conversations with, I think, three folks that live on Scott's Court. The folks here tonight. I have had a communication the last couple of days with Sharon Dixon, who lives in the third house down on Scott Court, answering a lot of her questions. So, yes, I believe I've talked with a pretty decent amount of folks within those first couple streets or two of the development.
Okay. And then, my next question is maybe for you and for Nathan. If this development was moved with...outside of the 150 feet of residential, you wouldn't need a conditional use permit. Is that accurate?
My understanding, and Nathan can confirm this, but we would have to have a parcel between us and the residential development which exceeded 150 feet. But that's not the case. We're developing the parcel closest to it, immediately adjacent to the single-family residential. But if we did a parcel map and created that 150-foot boundary and left that parcel alone, my understanding is then we wouldn't need that major site plan review for the 150-foot requirement.
Nathan, can you confirm that, please? Thank you, Ken. And I guess my question is, what's triggering the... Where does the 150 feet begin and end, and what needs to be there?
Thanks, Michelle. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. There are two triggers for this. One is the 24-hour operations. Any use in the MS zone would require a conditional use permit to exceed those hours. Specifically, the residential adjacency for 150 feet. The areas in yellow are residential zoning districts. So, every area with...any development, any non-residential development within 150 feet, which would be the majority of the site, would trigger discretionary review.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions?
Nathan?
Oh, sorry.
Before you leave, I'm sorry. Did I interrupt somebody? This kind of has to do with Ken's comment about job-housing balance. Given that we've heard testimony that the one house closest is going for $800,000, how many of these new homes are gonna be priced at a sale price that someone working in, you know, your standard warehousing job could afford?
I don't know if I would concur with that. Workers in the Verdi area... Yeah, the...I don't know. I don't have an updated average, you know, median home price for the Verdi area. But it is higher than most of the Trekkie Meadows. That being said, the Bluffs apartment, a little over 250 apartments, would be built right up the street. Overall, I would leave it at that.
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had one more question for staff. And I knew I had one earlier. Sorry, Nathan, I forgot it. We did hear on the voicemail comment earlier, essentially a comment about the open space area. And obviously, we're providing that for the buffering. And we've seen this on other projects. Potential concern about, you know, nighttime activity, things like that. You know, an opportunity for just unwanted activity to happen in that space. Was that a consideration for staff? And if so, maybe you can talk to me about that?
Yeah. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. That is a concern. The request is for 24-hour operations of the facility. The public...the trail network would have a public access easement. But it would be privately owned, common area outside of that trail. What the applicant has proposed is lighted bollards along the trail network. And that's subject to a final approval by staff with how the project is designed. But certainly, SEPTED concerned. We didn't receive a SEPTED comment on this. But when we evaluate that plan, that was... That will definitely be something that staff looks at, appropriate lighting and things of that nature.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, just one more. Sorry, Nathan, I tried to catch you before you sat down. I just wanted to...I'm trying to get... Just want a little clarification here. There was a...again, on the alternative equivalent compliance, I'm trying to wrap, not so much the issue of that, but there's... the issue of that, but there's a comment in our staff report that says, basically, the mixed employment, given concerns with land use suitability for the mixed employment land use on the site, staff encouraged the applicant to request the MS zone, which allows for limited industrial uses with enhanced design. Okay, so maybe my question is, in broader terms, so that the MS zoning, the issue that we were looking at before, so this enhanced design is limited just to this idea of additional transparency on the first floor? Or is there anything else that comes along with the reasons for looking at this, you know, industrial uses being here with enhanced design? Is that the only category or the only caveat to doing industrial use under this land use? Is that enhanced design?
Yes, Nathan Gilbert, that, so that, that recommendation during the initial staff application process was, was really looking at the base zoning and the comprehensive uses of allowed uses. Enhanced design compared to the arterial commercial zoning, it's very limited design standards, residential, and also would apply under the old code, which, which don't have a lot of the design considerations, including the enhanced grading, residential adjacency standards, things of that nature. So that was more from a macro perspective, based with the zoning. With this particular application, it's, it's still fairly limited for the industrial product. It's building orientation, enhanced landscaping, and again, the new code utilizing the mixed use suburban standards and the overall amendments that have been made with the code update.
Okay, so, so some of that enhanced design actually would apply not just to an industrial development there, it would apply to any one of these types of developments in that particular zone?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was where I thought you were going with this, but I wasn't, I wanted to make sure I understood that. So thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions, Commissioners? Discussion? Commissioner Dracula?
Yeah, yeah, just for the sake of discussion, I mean, Commissioner Marshall, your comments previous on the item I've been holding to heart for the past 30, 45 minutes, and really, you know, the future of Verdi and what they've gone through, you know, for that parcel or those two parcels, what is the right development? And I'm struggling with what that neighborhood would really want, and I know residential is impossible. I guess in your thoughts, just because you kind of started it, what would you see as a good fit for that parcel in the future if we didn't approve this one tonight?
Well, Commissioner Marshall, I'll give you a technical answer that probably is sour grapes. And that is, that decision is the, is the first zoning decision. So you make the zoning decision based on what range of uses do you want to have in that site? Once we made that change, this is, it's, it's a use that's permissible with the CUP. I think it's an, but your basic kind of question is, you know, would, would a more arterial commercial type of uses be more appropriate for, you know, the mouth of that development? So you're not funneling through, you know, on both sides, warehousing to get to this, you know, pocket of neighbor, neighborhood. It really, that becomes a different question when you've already changed, when you've already changed the zoning, and now we're looking at whether or not this particular project is consistent with all the findings we have to make. Now, that doesn't mean that I, you know, I personally agree that this, we could make the findings here. I think residential adjacency is a particular tough one right here. But that doesn't, that's based on what this proposed use is, not what I would prefer to see in that site. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. And I was following Commissioner Johnson's lead and was in alignment with him with what was it currently zoned as, arterial and hotel, and it seemed as if mixed use, mixed use suburban would be a better fit for the future planning of this land. Not to say we're guaranteeing decisions on the next item because of that. And I do understand what you're saying. When we made that change, we opened up another door and have another path to walk down, but I feel like it was the right decision, and I'm, you know, listening to the public comment, and even Mr. Crater's, you know, presentation in regards to what is the best fit, and he made, you know, good points if we do put in a small business park or, you know, restaurants or small businesses go in there, are they going to have increased traffic regardless? Is it going to be more? Obviously, there's a lot to be said about all that, but that's what I'm wrestling with at this moment. But I just wanted to talk to you and want to say thank you for your comments prior.
Well, I, I think some of Commissioner Gower's comments relate to what you're talking about. It's not just the level of traffic, but the mix of traffic. And that, to me, resounds kind of in the neighborhood compatibility and residential adjacency findings, rather than, you know, is the LOS level, you know, level of service C maintained? It's, you know, what uses are you driving there? What cars are you driving? You know, so I don't know if that was some of the reasons why Commissioner Gower was asking those kind of questions, because, you know, really, it's now a pocket of residential, or not a pocket, but a not insignificant, insignificant amount of area of residential that's kind of boxed in by, you know, potentially boxed in by warehousing that is fairly truck-heavy, but, you know, has a different use pattern than, say, a restaurant. It's gonna be, you might be driving more trips with the restaurant, but those trips are a different character.
Correct, yeah, and that's what I'm wrestling with as well, but also, if it is more daytime trips, you know, in higher traffic times, you know, is that another, is that concern more than someone driving at 11 o'clock at night, where obviously there'll be some noise from an 18-wheeler, like you said, but, you know, how much different is that than the daytime trip increase, so?
Good points.
Ken, I might ask you to put up part of your presentation again. You had some rendering photos, and one was taken, it looks like from the south side of I-80, looking at the neighborhood. Please. Or Michelle.
Can you put that up, Michelle? That's it.
Okay. So for discussion, I'm having a hard time with the CUP finding number two. And the reason why this is so hard for me is because if I look at this picture, the character, it doesn't, so the proposed land use is compatible with the surrounding development and the project. However, if you look further to the north, there's industrial right above it with those two big warehouses. So I'm hoping that maybe Nate can give me some help on how he was able to make that finding. It's just there's like this hodgepodge of industrial, commercial up to the north, and then warehouse, and then hotel, and then you have these residence, residential. So how do you make that all go together? How do you make it compatible? Help me get there, please.
And I can add, obviously, that's why we put the 400-foot landscape buffer along the freeway, right? And then if you think about it, you've got our new project, Cabela's, which I think is 30 to 35 feet tall, then Boomtown, right? So there is that large commercial component existing, and that's why we felt creating that large landscaped area as a separation was truly a good way to allow that finding to be made. And I don't think, again, there's a lot of projects that would go on this site that would be able to create that type of landscape buffer in between.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, I don't know how many 400,000 square foot projects are gonna go there, too. Go ahead, Nate.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Yeah, I think hodgepodge is an appropriate description. Yes, I mean, there's substantial warehouse and distribution use just north of the site. That, combined with the proposed mitigations, and also the site history as decades-long as a, as a truck stop, and the Meridian 120 North project tentative map approval, that was a significant point of, of discussion and approval all the way to council, is the compatibility and mitigations for the subdivision design with that use at that time. And again, that, that entitlement has expired, but the history is there. That with the significant warehousing to the north and the freeway orientation with the direct access with the proposed mitigation is where staff landed.
Is this landscaping between the residential and the warehouse, in your mind, is that as, as much as we can do? Is there anything else? And then maybe over between the old model homes and the, to the north?
I, I think that the lands, this is more robust buffering than, than any project that I can think of that we've done, at least for that western portion. And then for the properties on Scott's Drive, I think the addition of that rock wall, in addition to, to the fairly extensive front landscaping, is sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can you put up the picture of the rock wall again? I'm sorry. So Ken, where am I, where am I looking from and seeing this? Where am I standing?
So if you look at the bottom right portion of the exhibit, you can see the small site plan, and this is rendering view number two. So where this was taken from is there's four existing homes on Phildigo Way, just south of Boomtown Garson Road. Those are all done, complete, occupied. And then there's four homes under construction. They've just poured the slabs. This is taken right in between the new homes and the existing homes, and we took it right at the top of the wall, roughly seven, eight feet in elevation, with the idea that if you manage to get high enough to look over the wall, this is the view that you would have.
What about the cul-de-sac? Are there any views from the cul-de-sac?
No, we did not do a photo rendering from the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Commissioners, I'm trying to get to the discussion. Commissioner Veltou?
Sure, thank you. You're doing great. I appreciate it. I, I'm really struggling with conditional use permit finding number two. I don't look at that map and look at how the project's laid out and think that that's compatible with the surrounding development. When I read that sentence in that requirement, I think that finding requires us to look at what's actually, what supports the development and what the surrounding development needs to kind of thrive and what's consistent with what's happening around that area. And I read that sentence that way because if you look to finding number five, that finding requires us to look at the types of uses that are permitted by the surrounding areas. So that's where I think about what the hypotheticals are and whether or not it's consistent with the type of allowed uses, not what is actually occurring in the surrounding areas. So I, I really struggle with finding number two, and I think this allows us to kind of take into account some of the, I guess, normative thoughts as to what could be there and what should be there by looking at that finding number two, and that's how we take into account some of the concerns that were brought up in the preceding discussion. But that's, that's the one I really struggle with, and I just want to put that out there if anyone has any thoughts on, on that finding.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the way that when you spin around, you're looking over your glasses at me, like, having the same, the same issue, so, no, I, I appreciate the conversation that's going on here. I think the, Commissioner Veltou, to your point, and to everybody's point that's looking at, at item number, or conditional use permit finding number two, there's two ways that, that I think, not so much the surrounding development, but the interesting part of that is the first part, that's basically the proposed land use and the project design. And I think that's, that, to me, is the key point of discussion here, is how is the project designed? And it speaks to all of these different options that, you know, could be on that site. What could they be? And what this option presents is a 42-foot-high solid wall that is located, granted, a long ways away from the adjacent residential on the west side, but it's located very close to some other residential on the north side and existing Boomtown Garson Road. So there's a land use pattern of design that changes significantly from a one- and two-story, single-family residence to a continuous wall of project development. And I think that's what we get at when we're looking, that's the, that's the piece of, to me, of residential compatibility that can't be solved with landscaping or distance. I mean, this is, it's a fundamental design differential. And that's where, you know, I, I struggle with it because there is land use in the area that is compatible with this. I mean, it's right across the street, we see it. But the difference is the design of that is set, it's the same type of building, but it's set down lower, it's out of the view corridor, its circulation is not, it doesn't use the same road in, I mean, it's accessed from the east. So when we're looking at the project design that's in front of us, that's where I, I'm able to look at that finding and, and clarify what my problem with it is, because the design of what's being presented is not compatible with what's immediately adjacent to that. So that's where I'm at. And then I guess the, the other part, just because, you know, to me, it, you know, I appreciated both Ken's comments and Nathan's comments about the alternative equivalent compliance and understanding that, but to me, there's just a, there's a fundamental idea that if we're trying to create a zone that has visual interest at the street level and the pedestrian level, and we're encouraging a project, you know, encouraging a zoning that requires that, and then turning around immediately and putting a project forward that, that is asking to do something different than that. And, and I agree that the windows, that the idea of providing the clear-story windows meets the, the letter of the law, but it certainly doesn't meet the intent. I mean, we've got clear-story windows that are placed in the building in locations that were already accent locations. So it's, it's kind of a, you know, a nod, but it's, you know, we're really not meeting that level of, of, you know, what the code is asking for. So that, to me, is a, is a concern for the alternative equivalent compliance. So from a discussion standpoint, I appreciate what I'm hearing from you. I just wanted to, you know, look at it from the, the design side and express where my concerns are with the findings. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Munoz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're, and thank you for articulating in that, Commissioner Johnson. What's getting me, or what I'm having a hard time, is I understand to the west, they've gone through great lengths to minimize the impacts of the houses there, as much as they can, considering the elevations of the building and the wall, and, but what about Scott's Court? And what about those houses there that are gonna look, instead of looking at Mount Rose, look at an entire side of a building? For me, that, that ruins the compatibility, hands down. I mean, maybe if that building wasn't there, and the first building towards the east was, then, then I could make that finding a little easier, but because of that right there, it just doesn't work for me. So that's, that's where I'm struggling with this. Thank you, man.
Commissioners, other comments, discussion? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at three findings, and one of them is the one that we're talking about, finding two under the CUP. The only thing I would add to that is that I think we painted ourselves into a corner a little bit with the zone change. I mean, there's only so many things that can be, be developed on that, that parcel with that zoning. Obviously, it's a wide range of uses, but a lot of them are gonna be by nature incompatible with residential development. So I just want to point that out. I agree with the, the conversation. I'm struggling with that as well, but just want to acknowledge that there is an underlying land use and zoning that is just by its very nature incompatible with residential development for the most part, no matter how you design it. The other two that I'm looking at under the, under the general approval criteria are number three mitigates traffic impacts. You know, I did ask that question of staff with the LOS, and I struggle with this on just about every project that we look at that involves traffic and how the city evaluates impacts and how we make this finding. I mean, there's, there's one component- I mean, there's one component of traffic that we look at, and that's volume. There are so many other aspects of mitigating impacts from traffic that I don't feel are captured under level of service. And one in particular is the mix of the types of vehicles that are using the roadways and how, one, that's compatible with the other types of, you know, vehicles and how safe that is. You know, we've looked at that bridge so many times with other projects in this area, and it's, I mean, it's just fundamentally a safety concern. And I always have an issue, you know, approving projects that put city of Reno residents or anyone visiting that area in jeopardy if they're, you know, using our roadways. That's certainly not something that we want to do. So I do want to make that point, and I do have, you know, pretty significant concerns with that. The last point I want to make under general approval criteria is the first one, consistency with the Reno master plan. You know, it sort of struck me during Ken's presentation. It's no fault of Ken's. You know, I think in a lot of ways, it's a fine project, but it's interesting that you pointed out that it would be a, you know, essentially like a highlight or a landmark or something to that effect. I don't know what your words were when you're driving into Reno on I-80, you know, it's the first thing that you see. And it sort of struck me that, okay, so now we've got the, kind of the first thing that people see on I-80 is, you know, industrial development. And we've done the same thing on 395 North coming into town, industrial development. We do the same thing on I-80 East coming into town, industrial development. I know that's in Sparks, but it's our region. And we did the same thing down south on Old 395, where we just approved that industrial, light industrial, whatever it was, where the station casino project was. So kind of all four inlets to our region have, are punctuated by industrial development. So one would think that our master plan says, you know, we're a city that really emphasizes industrial development. If that's the first impression that we want to have as a region or as a city, I guess, then I think we're doing a good job. But I'm not really sure that's what the master plan says. So I'm kind of struggling with that as I look at this project and I sort of think back at some of the other projects that we've looked at. So I don't really have a resolution or a follow-up to that, but I just wanted to make that statement out loud. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Yeah, on the zoning, Commissioner Johnson pointed this out on the last item. There are a lot of similarities between what uses are allowed in the general commercial and MS. So when we're looking at types of projects that would be compatible with this, there's not a huge difference in... I mean, there are some differences for sure, but we didn't, I don't think we necessarily limit the type of projects that can go in there. I just, I think the way the project is designed, as Commissioner Johnson said, is what I'm having an issue with. Warehouse is compatible, so that's, you know, a compatible use. There's lots of other uses, too. You could put in, you know, what am I looking at here? Well, cannabis independent testing laboratory would take a couple permits, but it's allowed. Collection station, you know? There's many uses.
I think that use would have good job housing balance, you know? There'd be lots of people that might be.
Commissioner, other comments? Commissioner Veltow.
I just have one quick question. Hopefully, it's quick for Nathan. And I appreciate you being willing to stand up and sit down so many times during tonight's meeting. Are there, are there projects that could exist on this property that would not require conditionally used permit? I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to be sure based on Commissioner Gower's comments.
Nathan Gilbert, when that was brought to Commissioner Taylor's inquiry, it would be a very limited, very limited portion on the eastern side of the subject site that wouldn't require it, but the vast majority of development on that site would require a discretionary review.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion if...
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving into a motion. Commissioner Marshall.
In the matter of LDC 21-00057, logistic center I-80 Phase Two, based upon the inability to make the applicable findings, in particular, CUP finding two, I move to deny the CUP. I don't think I need to mention the AEC here because that's totally dependent on the CUP passing. So just end the motion there. So I move to deny the CUP.
Commissioner Veltow, second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Commissioners, further discussion? So I would just, to the applicant, I'm not, I'm gonna be supporting the motion, but I'd like to see more outreach to the neighbors over to the north and then some additional screening to help me make condition number two. And I don't know what that looks like, but those are my reasons. So, Michelle, can we take a vote? Yes. Kathleen Taylor.
Yes.
John Marshall.
Yes.
J.D. Draculich.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Alex Veltow.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Could you please read the appeal process in the record? Yes. Let's see here. The appeal process. Any final action, not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission, may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 business days, starting on the day after written notification of the action is filed with the city clerk. If the applicant has elected to use the former zoning code in effect prior to January 13, 2021, as authorized per RMC 18.01.602, appeals must be filed within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. And if the 10th calendar day falls on a weekend or holiday, when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed the next business day. Okay. Moving on to item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a meeting last Thursday, several projects on the agenda. There was an issue in the county for ORMAT, adding a utility corridor, power line northeast of Pyramid Way. That had been postponed since January, came back and was approved. There was the similar review of the power line relocation along Old Highway 40 that was before us. That was also approved. There was a couple of items for Cold Springs. It was actually interesting, the whole Truckee Meadows plan has the various tiers.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Can we?
No problem.
Folks, can you go outside, please? Thank you.
The development had changed for the tiers and where the development could be, and so there was an issue with an existing development that actually needed to convert some property. And so there was a big discussion between moving something from tier three into tier two so development could occur, and they offset that with some other open space requirements. So it was, there'll be some more interesting things coming forward with that in the future, I think. And then the last one that was on there was the Santera Quilice project, the last part of the Morton-Singarson, the furthest south, has, was, came before regional for not the tentative map, but the zone change and master plan designation change. And there were some concerns that were raised by the commission and asked that that be re-reviewed by staff and brought back to us, I believe, at the next meeting, which is supposed to occur this month, but the date has not been set yet. So I think it was, did I remember everything? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela, staff announcements, please.
Good evening, Assistant CD Director Angela Foose. City council has voted on the 22-on-Lakeside project that came before you. One is a zone change, and the second one for a 22-unit, attached townhome product. They voted to approve the zone change, and then there were a number of modifications made on the 22-on-Lakeside tentative map project. They ended up taking away all the units that fronted Lakeside, and they put in pickleball courts, a pickleball court, and some additional landscaping, and then made some other changes, reduced the density. And so council did approve the revised site plan, so both of those have been approved. Other than that, we haven't had any other land use cases go before city council. We have one more council meeting next week, and then council will be on what we call their summer break until later in July. They'll be very busy when they come back, coming, it's always, it's always a lot when they come back, and we have a number of projects moving forward and text amendments moving forward. So I'll have a lot to update you with in August. Second from that, I did send out, just, it's kind of a mass email. I tried to include all of you guys on that email. It went out yesterday, just an update. We call it, start stakeholder kind of development outreach group. We have about close to 300 people on that email list. Anyone that wants to be added, I add, just to give people an update on kind of what we're doing at the city of Reno, specifically in community development. As you saw, that, you know, number of building permits is one thing we track on a regular basis, and they are just booming. I mean, out of control, record highs. I know we're feeling it at the staff level. We've lost a number of people during COVID because of retirements and other reasons, and so we have about, I think, eight positions that we're trying to now backfill. That will definitely help. Our timelines are just getting longer. Again, final maps and building permits, there's a lot going on right now. But the biggest uptick is in residential development. Probably not a big surprise to anyone. I think with COVID, the commercial and retail business has kind of slowed down. Definitely industrial development, some of these distribution, you know, Amazon-type companies are coming forth, I think, as a result of COVID. And then housing, we're just definitely seeing a need for housing and a supply of housing that we can't necessarily keep up with either, just on the review level. But all good news, right? I mean, that we would much rather see that than the opposite that we saw in the recession, you know, 15, 20 years ago. So good stuff. Other than that, we do have Commissioner Marshall with us until the end of the month. And then we have a new commissioner, starting in July, that will fill his seat. But hopefully, John, you will be here at our next planning commission meeting, I take it?
I will not.
Oh!
Oh!
Well, we will make you come back so we can give you your honorary recognition. We, we, we'll make you come back for the official discussion. So other than that, no updates from my end. We are definitely back in person. We are still working on trying to come up with a hybrid public meeting format, and that's, we're having some just technical issues. It'd be great if we could do both Zoom and live in-person meetings. I think a lot of the jurisdictions are doing that. We currently do not have that capability, just with all the different softwares that we have to manage for these meetings, but know that we are working on it, and we'll keep you informed. That's it.
Thanks, Angela. Moving on to item number eight, Commissioners' suggestion for future agenda items. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'm wondering why planning commission doesn't get a summer break?
You should make that motion.
I'm not making, I just, it was a question. I just figured, I could save it for public comment or ask it during suggestions, so...
We can't hear you. We're still... Commissioners, any real comments? Okay. Number nine, public comment. I have a request to speak for, and it's from John Marshall.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all. It was, you know, I think it was the best decision for me, and it was my decision not to seek reappointment, and I think Sylvia Villanueva is gonna be a very, very capable person to replace me. She's an attorney, so you're not gonna lose any of that, you know, incisive commentary that you've been so used to. But I'd like to extend my deepest thanks to my fellow commissioners. It's really been a, you know, we have come from different perspectives. I know we tend to say this a lot, but just the camaraderie and the ability to talk things through without acrimony, I think, is a great example for our larger community at this particular time to, for us to set an example like that. For staff, from Arlo, Angela, Jeff, Nathan, and particularly Michelle, thank you so much for being, allowing me to make you the butt of a lot of jokes, but... So it's been, it's been great, and I really appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to a little more diverse planning commission in the future. Thank you.
Are you gonna pass on your holiday shirt?
Nope.
Darn. Well, you're gonna have to come back and see us. Do we have any other public comment, Michelle?
No, I do not.
Okay, we will close public comment. Item number 10, adjournment. Motion? Okay. All of us in favor? All right. Okay, everybody, thank you.
And there's cookies that my girlfriend made in the...